Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait a minute, can I just say, I am so happy. We have done our mission stated in strategic plans, justice in framing them, so, thank you. That's so awesome. Okay, go on with the program, I'm sorry. I just noticed that.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So.
Do I have an agenda?
Second.
Where is it?
Any discussion? We'll be on a voice vote?
Yes.
On this issue, yeah. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have a presentation by the San Diego County Treasurer, Scott Patterson.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce our county treasurer tax collector, Dan McAllister. And as he comes up to the microphone, I'll just comment that since taking office, Dan has been a great friend and partner with the schools. Taking a proactive approach in trying to reach out to us, the schools, with regards to issues of cash management and financing. And he's here tonight to share some thoughts on this recent issue of capital appreciation bonds. Dan?
Thank you very much. And as hard as it is for the treasurer tax collector not to receive thunderous applause when he stands, I just want to say it's good to be back in Alcoa and out here. My son, I shared with Scott earlier, played a lot of competitive baseball out in this area, a lot, before he went on to the Naval Academy. And we're just very much in your debt for helping him grow and prosper and do well in his sports career. But over the past year, there have been a lot of, sort of an increase in the scrutiny of capital appreciation bonds and debt structures that relate to capital appreciation bonds on a local, state, and federal level. There's been a lot in the news about them lately. In particular, there was an article about a week and a half ago that pertained to Northern California school districts, as well as community college districts in the Sacramento Bee. I would commend that article to you as well. Because it talked about certain districts that have obligated themselves to long-term payback plans at ratios that sometimes approximate 11, or 12, or 13 to 1 payback ratios, which are very, very out there. And one of the things that we've tried to do in our role, usually as a paying agent for school districts when they do issue bonds, is try to offer up opinions when asked as to whether this is a good thing, or not a good thing, or whether the thing should be a little differently structured. And when we're asked, we love to help, and we're always there to help. We like to consider ourselves a fiscal resource, and I think Scott has alluded to some of the things we've tried to do. We regularly produce seminars for trustees, as well as superintendents, and CFOs, and CBOs, as well as personnel of school districts and other local government agencies, talking about debt issuance, talking about cash handling, cash management, some of those kinds of things, as well as fraud. Because there's a lot of all of it that goes on in your lives and in ours as well. We hope not the fraud part, by the way. Strike that from the record. But nevertheless, what we've discovered is that there are usually some common characteristics that may result in higher debt burdens to taxpayers down the road. And we've got a list here, I think you've got them in front of you, of some of those that are warning signs, warning flags. When there are large principal amounts greater than $100 million, it's always prudent to be watchful, and especially watchful. The term structures that are longer than 25 years. Remember that the education code in California limits bond indebtedness to 25 years, but because the laws changed a few years ago, it enabled school districts to go around the ed code, out to the government code, and issue debt up to 40 years, a lot longer. The interest rates are higher, in some cases, than they normally should be. 12% for the California government code, which is allowed, versus 8% under the ed code. We think lower interest rates are always better when you're borrowing money. I think most people would agree. If we can pay a lower interest rate on whatever it is we're borrowing money for, it's a good thing. The debt repayment ratios are greater than 4 to 1. We know of lots of examples, I used a couple earlier, that were examples of pretty out there, out on a limb, egregious examples of 12 to 1, 13 to 1, 14 to 1 paybacks. That means they're paying back 12 or 13 times what they borrowed over the life of the bond that they have issued. We don't think that's in the best interests of taxpayers or your constituents. Because ultimately, these due bills will come back to the residents of your school district, and there is no ceiling on payback when the debt is owed. So it's just something to watch. And then the last thing, that some of the debt issuances that we have noticed, and were cited in this B article in Northern California, were that many districts had issued debt with no callability, which meant that they had no options down the road, they were locked in. And that means, basically, that if the metrics changed, the economy changed, or, for instance, maybe there was an influx into a district of new students, they needed to build new schools, they needed to add new classrooms, they needed to do retrofit, they needed to do all kinds of things that you regularly do with bonding, and maybe refinance the issue that they had made. But they couldn't do it because there was no callability provision in the bond. We think that's a good thing for people to watch for. Now, moving on to the next page, and this is something that's not a secret, because we have made our intentions known, and that is that we have moved forward to try to seek sponsorship for legislation in the California State Legislature in the next session, that will help us to tighten up some of the code discrepancies. And all we're saying, by the way, is tighten up, not get rid of these kinds of bonds. These bonds have a definite place in a well-managed debt portfolio. And by the way, I should take this one opportunity, this is unsolicited, but I think you have an outstanding financial officer in Scott Patterson. This guy knows so much, it's incredible, and he's a great resource to our community. So I applaud you for having someone of that caliber here on the staff. But I think there are five key elements to our reform proposal. First of all, we want to try to limit the maturity of a bond issued under the government code from 40 years to 25 years, aligning that back with the education code. Secondly, we'd like to reduce the maximum allowable interest rate from 12% to 8%, again, to align it with the California education code. Third, we'd like to ask that a callable feature be embedded in all debt issuances, whether they're cabs or any debt issuance, because it does give you, as a board and as a district, more options down the road. Fourth, require one of three government entities to sign off on bond documents for school districts. And again, this is already prescribed in the California ed code, but it's not necessarily in the government code. So we would like to say that, as is true with the California ed code, one of the three bodies, the California Board, I'm sorry, the County Board of Supervisors, the County Superintendent of Schools, or in the case of community college districts, a community college district board, would approve and sign off on something before it's finally issued. And then fifth, to establish a prudent debt service coverage ratio, not to exceed 4 to 1, but with a caveat that, in a situation where it's needed, in other words, where you have to go higher because of interest rates or the climate that's out there, we can't think of good examples, but there are from time to time, seeking a waiver from the county superintendent of schools, so that he or she has signed off on that before moving forward. And then, moving forward, I think our goal really with these legislative reforms is to try to post a summary of all future school district bond issuances on our website at the county, on the treasurer tax collector's website, so that people can see in the public how much the debt is, what the payback ratios are, what the terms are of the debt that's issued. And this, again, is in keeping with, I think, things that your board stands for and talks about, as do many and most now, and that is disclosure, openness, and transparency. They're good things, and we want to encourage that as much as possible. And then certainly, I think last but not least is the need to continue what we started about nine and a half years ago, a series of seminars each year, which address issues and help to better educate people like you who make decisions in the public arena. One of your counterparts at another district the other day made a great suggestion, and I think we're going to take them up on this idea, and that is to address the issue that most trustees, like yourselves, have real jobs during the day, and they can't attend seminars during the workday. So their suggestion was that if we were to stage something in the evening someplace in a central spot, like Mission Valley, people, trustees, superintendents, business officers could attend, and we want to try to do that. So we would propose, for instance, possibly, and we're talking possibles here, to bring the assessor out to talk about valuations moving forward in San Diego, bring the auditor of the county out to talk about redevelopment and the implications long-term for everybody concerned, as well as offer sort of a bond 101 primer, which we think would be helpful to people moving forward, just in understanding the processes that go on. So without further ado, I really would commend to you all of these. I want to say also that the Taxpayers Association has offered up some ideas on reform, and we are in support of those that we have read and seen. Ours are different a little bit, but they complement what they've offered. In one school district situation, La Mesa Spring Valley recently, when we got out there to present our five, they had a list of 10, including many of the taxpayer association recommendations. And by the end of the evening, the board had adopted our five, plus those 10, and melded them into a nice workable list to amend their policies and procedures. And we want to just say we're here as a resource. We would like to help you if there's anything we can do to help. And we thank you for your attention this evening, and I'd be happy to take any class, any questions that you might have. I get choked up on this, you know, you can see that.
Thank you, Dan, for being here, I appreciate that. And I think it's important that we're taking the opportunity to be out in front of this, and we do thank Scott, we do appreciate his efforts in all of these areas. One of the things that is, this is brought to mind, is when you first initiate a bond, you may not necessarily use cabs, but maybe in a refinance you might do that. Do you find that, with the school district that you've seen, is it more likely to happen in a refinance as opposed to the first issuance of a bond? Or does it matter?
Well, I'm not sure it matters, but I think you addressed one issue in your question, and that is the length of time sometimes between when a bond issue is contemplated and when it finally gets issued. And as we have seen in some districts, this can be two, three, four years from the time of concept to completion. And it's ironic and sort of sad sometimes that the terms of the deal don't, really aren't made available until almost the time the bond is priced. And so it makes it difficult sometimes to plan. It makes it also difficult for us to get involved if we're just brought in at the very end of a situation. I think that you have a strong financial advisor, an FA. All districts hire FAs, and you expect and hope they give you independent, objective advice, which is in your best interests. The underwriters should do the same ethically, as should the bond councils. One thing that I can tell you coming from the industry is, and it's something to be aware of, and that's called YTB, Yield to Broker. Sometimes Yield to Broker gets in the way of Yield to Client, and you want to make sure that you're first and not the other way around in the dealings.
Thank you.
I'm not sure this is for you, Dan, but for our financial advisor, I know we have large principal amounts, because our bond is close to $1 billion. Have we got anything structured longer than 25 years? We do. We have one issuance that goes out 35 years that was issued, two issues ago.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Is that the one you said before?
It was an environment, and part of the overall bond structuring deal, it was issued in, actually, it was August 2010, when interest rates were extremely low on the long end, and the advice we received was to structure debt to take advantage of revenues that we knew we would have to access to issue the whole $417 million under Proposition U, to kind of create room earlier in the program for the more issuance of more, what are called current interest bonds. Okay, and the amount of that was 17 million? Is that what you said? Well, the total amount that we issued was 80 million. For 35 years. But they didn't all go out 35 years. The longest maturity in that sequence went out 35 years, and I don't know how much of that was on that 35-year end. Our interest rates have all been under 8%? Is that correct? Yeah, we just lucked out on that one. Right. Do we have any debt repayment ratio in excess of 4 to 1? No. And do we have any that are, have no prepayment clauses? We do, some of the cabs do have no prepayment clauses. The counter to the idea of having callability is that you're paying a premium to the investor to achieve that result. So it all comes in part of the package of the overall financing program.
So it's like a negotiation tool?
And actually, maybe, I should say, we're looking forward to working with Dan and the legislature in developing a well-thought-out and reasoned piece of law. It seems that's coming. I think Dan alluded in his comments that, in a well-structured program, cabs do have a place. And hopefully, we don't end up where we outlaw cabs, which I've seen some of those ideas floating around in the aftermath of the articles that came out.
You're absolutely right. If I could, real quick, last session of the legislature, there were at least two or three bills that wanted to just ban cabs. We don't agree with that. We don't think that's the answer. We think the answer is to achieve a little more moderation and just tweak or tune this up a little bit, so that there's more balance between the ed code and the government code.
And currently, there is, the oversight is this board for our bonds, and that's it, is that correct?
Well, I think you have an oversight committee as well.
Many of whom are here tonight. Right, but I'm talking about it's a local oversight. You don't oversee presently this.
That's correct. It's up to all 42 public school districts in San Diego County to issue their own bonds and their own debt, and they make their own decisions as to yea or nay, or yes or no, or whatever, and terms, et cetera. I just think it's prudent, and what we're stressing and reiterating from Scott, to make sure you hire the best people, give you objective advice, and know that you're getting good advice, so that you have a balanced portfolio. And I think you do. I think some of the elements of the portfolio you now have are very balanced, and would compare incredibly favorably well with most districts throughout the state.
Yeah, I do think it's important for the governing board to know that we are one of the districts that involves Dan's office early in the planning and oversight of these bond issuances. So somebody from Dan's office is on the team in terms of the financial advice that we're receiving, as we put together our financial advisor, our underwriters, and the county treasurer tax collector's office. Thank you, Dan.
One more. Sure. Go ahead. I'm pretty sure there's no way to restructure the 35-year bonds, but then the recommendation is never again, correct?
No, I don't think that is the recommendation at this point. What we're trying to say is that we would like to see some parity and some balance between the two codes, and if you achieve that, I think it will by definition bring things in to, in the future, a 25-year realm. And that's really, that's really it. It's not doing away with the opportunity to use these bonds, it's just trying to rope things in a little bit, rein them in.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was just going to, I think this is a really important issue, and I think with you and the San Diego taxpayers, and Scott, those people from our school districts in that role, California School Board Association might be interested in what you're developing also, because that's made up of all the districts up and down the state of California. Maybe they are not all represented in the delegation, but we try and reach out and get that information to them, so if that's a vehicle in the future that can be used to help, help all school boards, you know, have the best policy in place for dealing with that, so that might be a future thought.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment.
Of course.
And a suggestion.
Yes.
If I may be so bold, I applaud your intent to post these future bond issuances on your website. I would suggest, and I don't know how reasonable this is, so I'll leave it in your hands, but not only future issuances, but some kind of summary as to the current status of bond issuers such as gross bonds, so that if the day comes we're going to issue more, somebody could see the whole picture instead of just a bond in isolation.
Sure.
And the other suggestion I'd make is, not just school districts, but all public agencies, because I think the same basic principles are going to hold true for municipalities and hospital districts, et cetera. And so I think, I may be wrong, but I would think the taxpayers would be interested in those kinds of issues as well.
I think you're absolutely right and on point on one issue, and that is that everybody is interested in this issue. The difference between other public agencies, though, and yourselves, is that they don't have such a thing as the ed code. They only have one code, and that's the government code, and that's the code through which they offer everything. So they're, you're in a better position because you've got options. They don't necessarily have options.
I have one. I was just speaking with Chris from the San Diego Taxpayer Association the other night, and he said that while they endorsed a bond above us, up north of us, there were things that happened after the fact, and maybe not all of the information was provided to them. So I think there's a safeguard issue there as well, that we're making sure that what we've presented is what we will go for.
Well, I think that's true, and I think where the comment comes from is what is listed in the first place on the ballot statement, if there's a ballot issue. And again, transparent as you can be, as open as you can be, and as clear on representation as you can be, one of the issues that has come out of not only that issue, but others as well, is the pledge to keep things at a $55 per $100,000 valuation. But council has now opined that that is just advisory only and not a lock-in, and there is no new vote needed to raise that in the future if bond payments aren't able to be made. So that would mean, in 20 years, when those payments start to be made, if there isn't the valuation on homes, the auditor's office of the county of San Diego, who does administer the bond payments and the collections and organizes them for distribution and things of that sort, would have the right to raise the per-house fee charged to pay down that debt. And that is where there is some concern. But not, I'm not alluding to this district.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
But those kind of concerns need. To be fleshed out.
Yes.
So we can put everything in place, and, but we need to be aware of those concerns as well.
I think vigilance is really the operative word, and, you know, with a guy like Scott, I mean, that's terrific, he's doing a great job, but this is a team effort, you know, and the whole team needs to work together to achieve what it is you hope to achieve. And we're there, and we're always willing to help, so we appreciate it, and thank you very much for the time on your agenda this evening.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
Last night, the CBOC received a thorough briefing from our financial advisor on this whole subject of the bond program financing specific to our program. And as an indication of the level of interest in this subject, what we had kind of planned to be a 20-minute presentation, question, and answer turned out to be an hour and a half. But I think it was very helpful, because throughout the course of the significant dialogue, the CBOC, and hopefully the representatives here tonight feel this way, achieved a much deeper level of understanding of a pretty complex issue. Because he covered the program status to date, future projections, comparisons to prior assumptions, and how those have changed with the change in the assessed valuations, and yes, cabs. What I'd like to do is offer to the governing board that same presentation and dialogue. And it's significant enough that I would suggest that we don't try to put it inside a regular board meeting, but I would ask you to consider and would offer a special session sometime in October, November timeframe, if you'd be willing to entertain Mark to come down and make that same presentation.
Thank you. We move on to public comments. We have not received any public comment cards, so I will move on, and if, unless there's, oh, there is one comment?
Well.
Oh. I'm sorry, am I misreading this?
No, you're not, Rob, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to jam a lot into this financial piece so that we can move on to the program pieces and get all this way out, if that's okay.
Okay.
These are some questions and answers on a very fundamental basis that I received from Member Schreiber that I thought would be useful as kind of a primer in getting us ready for that whole issue. The first question is, what's the difference between a district's bonding authority and bonding capacity? Authority is the dollar amount of bonds the voters have approved. In our case, Proposition U is $417 million. That's the authority that we have. Capacity refers to the statutory requirement that at any one point in time, we can only have a certain percentage of bonds outstanding. For a high school district, that limit is 1.25. Often, these are used interchangeably, and I just thought that'd be a good primer. So the question is, what is our current authority and capacity? Well, we have two propositions out there. Proposition H was 274. We've issued it all, so we have no authority left there. Proposition U is the 417. We've issued 180. We have authority remaining of $237 million. Get ready for some big numbers. Our capacity on August 1st, our assessed valuation is $36 billion, with a B, times the percent in quarter. We have a capacity of $458 million. Right now, we have outstanding bonds between the two issuances, and we've retired some, of $408 million. So we have a capacity of $50 million. When can the district issue more bonds? Well, we intend to do a bond sale in next August in the range of 40 to 45 million, and the constraint, as Dan referred to, is really that tax ballot measure promise that we made. We're trying not to exceed $27.90 per 100,000 of assessed valuation. Next is where are we in terms of the dollars themselves? We, my pointer, my laser just went dead, so we're going to have to read off the screen. The total bonds issued, the 454 million. We've received 136 million of state matching on the right-hand side. Again, this is divvied up between Prop H and Prop U. We have spent 488 million between the two. We've committed 61, and we have pending commitments on projects that are outstanding, that we've got to make those commitments to complete, of 28 million. So we've got 13 million for allocation to future projects. And what opportunities are there for further financing that we can reduce our existing outstanding debt? We've had some good luck with Proposition H. There's nothing really on the horizon for either H or U in the next three to five years, so we're probably only going to be doing new money deals, is what they're called from this point forward, for another five to six years. With that, I'll get ready to turn.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that he's very helpful.
You're welcome.
I'll get ready to turn it over to the superintendent and introduce the meat of the presentation tonight, but I guess I'd like to make one comment, and that is that tonight, what you're going to see is an assessment of projects according to a program plan. That program plan assumes that we're going to receive all, all program funding in the program. This is a $601.7 million program, but it's predicated
This is a $601.7 million program, but it's predicated on being able to access all 417 million of bonds. And this whole issue of cabs and can we issue bonds to access that comes up with the assessed valuation question. And will the state be able to make good on their share? So the underlying assumption of everything we talk about tonight is we're going to get all those dollars, but that risk is out there, if you follow me. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the superintendent for comment.
So I, we're, we're back to Roman numeral three, I think? Okay.
There's no public comment.
Okay, so, I, I believe there's no public comment requested, so without objection, I'm not going to read all the public comment rules. Is that okay? And we do have agendized here CBOC member comments, so I would like to invite appropriate members to the microphone. Thank you.
Penny Hallgren, I am vice chairman of the, of your Bond Oversight Committee, and Nancy is vacationing in London right now, so I am standing in her stead. Yeah. So first of all, I would like to express our appreciation for your staff's ongoing openness and support. As you heard Dan say, Scott and his crew, as well as GAFCON, are just amazing. I mean, we ask questions, they answer them, and they, and they're very open, they're very transparent, so we really appreciate that. As you may know, about a month ago, the Bond Oversight Committee held a workshop where we were updated on the status of the projects at each one of the schools, similar to what's going to happen tonight. More in-depth in the schools, you're going to get a broader picture of what's going on. The purpose was so that, so that the Bond Oversight Committee could be made aware of potential issues at each school and become a little more involved in the process of evaluating alternatives, rather than being handed after-the-fact solutions, and be in the awkward position of digging for details regarding how the decisions were made and questioning whether really there might have been alternatives that would have served the interests of the taxpayers more effectively. At this point in time, after the, after the review and after ongoing discussions at our meetings, we believe that we have a very good understanding of the issues and look forward to working with your staff and the board in creating a formal process for the CBOC to be involved in the decisions regarding the construction projects as appropriate. I mean, we're not going to get into, you know, a whole lot of the details, and especially the timing, because, you know, sometimes decisions have to be made and there's no meetings or time for us to be included. But especially involved in the projects that are falling below the line due to lack of funds. That way, we believe that we can be confident in our assurance to the taxpayers, as is our responsibility, that the bond funds were wisely allocated and ensure that the highest priority projects were completed, even if we run out of money due to state funding or bond sale limitations. So with that, I look forward to hearing what this evening brings, and I'm not sure if other members of the CBOC would like to make comments, but thank you very much.
Would any other members of the, come on up, please?
Good evening, Superintendent, Governing Board, staff, members. My name's Robert Ball. I'm a member of the CBOC. I, my role is parent of a student, and my youngest is a senior over at LCAP this year. And I'm happy and proud to be part of this organization and gone through a pretty fast learning curve in this recent year, and as recently as last night. More information was divulged, which is very beneficial to our group, and ultimately, a lot of that will be highly, probably raises to the top. Talk about the cream raising to the top. These bond sales, the repayment, I think trumps any and all basic, is this choice of this building going to be built, or is that one going to be built? Is it a new remodel? Is it an old remodel? Is it a knock-down, tear-down? All of those, I honestly, and unfortunately, I believe now fall a little bit further down on the priority scale. I think that your investment in your bonds and selling of the bonds, of course, comes to the top, and that exceeds my level of expertise, but I'm glad to hear, Scott, that your financial advisor that you had last night had specifics that he presented, and the tax collector had similar, in my opinion, had very similar comments, but there were, they were, there were separations of thought processes. And as a, just as a person of the district, I would recommend that, as you board members have suggested, that you invest time and effort and learn as much about this before you advise the staff on that. With that being said, I'd like to come to a more grassroots level of the reason why I'm here, and that is to talk about multipurpose rooms versus performing arts centers. Last spring at LCAP, or at Cajon Valley, when we had the bond workshop, some members of this governing board had tasked our group, our CBOC members, to become more involved, become more versed, more well-versed on all topics related to that. And one of the things that stuck in my craw was, it seemed like there was a disparity in opinions of whether to go with a PAC or with a multipurpose. And the presentation that Bob Keisling and Katie gave a month ago, that, that Penny had referenced, the, the workshop that we had held, brought to light costs and site plans that showed one selection is being done, and we were made privy last night to the superintendent's recommendation that I believe he's going to forward, and, but I don't, I'm not going to rain on his parade. He needs to make that, but... With all that being said, in addition to sitting on the CBOC, I sit at the school, at the school site level on the music program, bond, the band program at LCAP, and I've since then also involved myself with the parent music advocacy group, which is several members of each of the 11 schools. We meet once a month, round robin at different schools, have one or more of the music directors, and sometimes some of the performing arts instructors are there. We dialogue mostly on educational stuff and events and planning, and sometimes we even try to take what little funds we have and try to assign scholarships to some of the more outstanding seniors that the district produces in the music programs. So with that, and with the task that I've had, and I've gladly accepted, of the CBOC, is I'm trying to meld some of those two separate thought processes together. And in the meetings that I've had on a monthly basis from last spring through now, I've talked with a lot of parents of the students, which are typically taxpayers in our district. I've talked to quite a few music directors, have talked to some of the MSF's folks, several of the site administrators at, at multiple sites. And I cannot say that I've got a majority or have entirely vetted this out, but those folks that I've spoken with have advised me, I've recommended what I know based on the involvement I've had. And ultimately, the selection of a multipurpose or a performing arts center is gravitating to a multipurpose building at the majority of these campuses. And we're not talking about the brand-new campuses or the recent ones that have theaters, talking about the older ones, the LCAPs, the Santanas, Cajon Valley. And the, most of these folks, most of these instructors have a vested interest in the, in the success of their programs. They would do it outside under a tent if push comes to shove. So they don't need, and it, it seems that the performing arts centers, although they are very luxurious and they would, you know, serve a multitude of services, the fact of the matter is, is they're not set up for multipurpose use. They, they have limited use, and of course, that is going to create many unusable days and, and events that should occur and be held on campuses that cannot otherwise be. They'll have to be pushed out to, to alternate venues. So with that all being said, I would like to see the governing board recommend, besides it meets the dialogue and the verbiage in Prop H and Prop U of multipurpose rooms versus a performing arts center, you're going to satisfy your taxpayers, the users of the building, and ultimately save a ton of money that would have otherwise been invested if the selection is to go with a performing arts centers. The last closing item that I have got to say to that, and it's a little on a lighter side, I've noticed this, there's, there's a, or had been earlier in the year, a bit of a naming, whether performing arts center is, I mean, that's the overall grand title, but to call a, the building that the music and arts students are going to use on a daily base and a daily use, those music instructors, their livelihood and their investment of time is going to be in that building. And they, it loses a bit of thunder to call it a multipurpose room. Those buildings are, you're, you're, you're going to produce music and arts students in a better venue than any band room or music room at any of these older campuses that you've already have pre-existing, so why not name that building a music and arts center? It can be nicknamed the MAC, and it, it has a kind of a, a, a light ring to it. Your vice principals, they'll get on the microphone, I'll cut it short here, Scott, your, your vice principals, they'll make an announcement over the intercom, hey, 10th graders, meet at the MAC during third period for whatever the event may be. And it may just be something, it'll, it'll provide pride of ownership, I think, in those instructors and in those students that would be involved with that program. And that concludes my statement.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other members of the CBOC who'd like to speak? Okay, I guess we are up for our workshop then.
Let's go. Very good. Thank you, President Shiel. I want to make a couple of quick comments. First of all, I want to point out to the board, we do have our principals present tonight because of their investment in, in the discussion that will go on tonight on a site-by-site basis and projects there. One of them is, is going to be gone, a bit of time in the middle for, to go to an open house for their child at their school, which I think we should encourage as educators. So, and also, I want to mention a special pat on the back to Steve Coover of Mount Miguel High School. This morning, the California State Title I Conference kicked off downtown San Diego, and prior to the introduction of Tom Torleksen, the Superintendent of Public Instruction, the colors were presented by the Mount Miguel Junior ROTC Color Guard, and the National Anthem was sung by one of the commanders of that group. And I sat in the crowd and watched our kids and listened to the comments from the, from the 800 people sitting in that ballroom, and they were just so impressed by our kids coming from our district, and then Tom Torleksen made some nice comments about them and the impact of the program and that sort of thing. So they were great ambassadors for our district and for Mount Miguel High School, so thank you, Steve. I want to make a few points before we get started tonight, and I, in order to say them, well, I don't always write down everything I say, but I did in this case. I want everybody who's here and everybody on the board to really, to know that one of the goals tonight is that we come away with an appreciation of all the great work that's been done to date in the bond program in this school district. And, and, and the purpose of the review is not to criticize any past practices or be critical of work done to date. In fact, I want to thank the members of this board and previous board members from this district. I want to thank Bob Collins and Terry Ryan, my two predecessors, as well as district and site staff and administrators who played key roles in gaining the support of the East County residents and taxpayers to pass propositions H and U. And those taxpayers deserve a special thank you for supporting our district, because, and, and our, our obligation is to, to demonstrate to them that we're managing our resources as carefully as we can, that we're provided through these two tax measures. Our students are ultimately the beneficiaries, and for that, all of us, I think, are very grateful. Our goal in this bond review process has been to revisit the program's direction and ensure that we're still on target to meet the needs of our district as described in the Long Range Master Plan that came out in 2008, and the subsequent planning efforts supported by various stakeholder groups across this district. It's essential that the work accomplished through the bond program be aligned with the educational priorities and goals in our district. We need to determine if the bond program reflects our current economic realities and our changing demographics. State funding and dramatic turn downs in student enrollment have been identified as key factors in past decisions and will be part of future considerations for this board. The board adopted the Long Range Master Plan in 2008, prior to Prop U going out to the voters. And that plan was the guiding document in the planning process that really gained a lot of momentum in the months following the successful passing of that proposition. Beginning in January 2009, the Long Range Master Plan was fleshed out on a campus-by-campus level, and various segments of our district, various committees and groups of teachers and other interested persons advocated and lobbied for their interest in the fleshing out of those plans. From April through July of 2009, there were reports to the board on the development of plans for projects across the district, and in July of that summer, again, the summer of 2009, the board heard a presentation on revisions, revisions to the 2008 Long Range Master Plan, and that report emphasized the performing arts centers and some CTE work and various things like that. And those revisions became known as the 2009 Long Range Master Plan. You can see that document on our website, on our bond website. Now, the board did not formally act on it, but it evolved to become a, a planning document that has really shaped a lot of the work that's occurred in this bond since that time. There's no record that the board was ever asked to take formal action. And, but in November, the board did look at the educational specifications that were generated by the work that was part of that 2009 revision to the Long Range Master Plan. This board bond review has been conducted to review the impact of that process and to provide the board with an opportunity to more formally act on key decisions moving forward. The decisions that will take shape over the coming months, shaped by the information and guidance coming out of last May's bond review workshop, and now with more clear direction tonight, will lead to the adoption, we hope, of a 2012 version of the Long Range Master Plan. And that plan will be something that the board will act on. I want the board to be fully aware of this program's development over time. I want the board to review what's been accomplished, to clearly understand what's being done now, to have the opportunity to clarify your priorities, and to be well-informed in order to provide direction on any bond-related decisions as we move forward from this date. I want to thank Katie Wright for her work on driving this effort. She'll take you through the next phase of our workshop this evening and provide the board with a campus-by-campus report, she and her staff, on the bond program. Scott Patterson has already provided you with some financial information. He will also contribute to the next portion of the workshop, and his insights in this process and the overall bond program are invaluable. You will also hear a segment tonight in the workshop on deferred maintenance, an issue of great interest to the board, to our CBOC, and to the overall program, bond, our bond program, and Bob Keisling, I want to thank in advance for providing a report on deferred maintenance. So without further ado, Katie Wright.
Good evening, members of the board. As soon as the slides come on here, we, sorry? From a, and this is not you, for you, this is, you're okay. From a board member's perspective, first of all, I want to thank staff and everyone who's worked so diligently to do this very thorough bond program review. The reason that we're doing this, and, and our superintendent, I want to thank him for taking this on. The reason why we're doing this is because this board did not approve a master facility plan in 2009. Has nothing to do with the fact that staff and we didn't, that we like the ideas or anything like that, but the board never took any formal action, as Superintendent Swenson said. In 2000, in July 2010, we received a very glossy, picturesque binder of performing arts centers and career tech. I watched that video, and- I watched that video and, or the board meeting, and I shared this with the superintendent. Dick Hoy and I were asking a lot of questions about that. So had those, had we stopped at that point, I think we would have a better idea of what we've promised and what we didn't promise in our bond. Performing arts were never a part of our bond. Somehow they took a life of their own, and we all agree with that. They morphed into something, but this board never approved that. And having the opportunity to sit on a bond subcommittee, we finally did see what it was costing this district to the tune of $40 million over budget, over the overall program budget. So I commend the staff in doing this, because we fell short in the past. This has nothing to do with our superintendent. But the board was not given the opportunity, in that 2009 ed spec that was adopted in July 2010, to vote on something with a budget and what campuses would be giving up for the PACs, the increased cost and scopes or any of that. That, for me, is the reason why we're here today, along with the cash flow, is to really step back and look at some things that were given direction that were not board-directed by virtue of budgets, and what would be lost on sites as far as what we talked in our last board bond workshop. This board is very concerned about the needs, the necessary needs on our campuses and to meet those. So I appreciate that we are taking this step back and meeting those needs from a much better pair of lenses, if you will. And for that, I just want to be on record that some people might have thought we passed a master facilities plan that gave that direction with budgets, but we did not. It took on a life of its own. So here we are today to hopefully put it in right place, in the right place, and move forward, because when I walk on these campuses, I am so impressed with what we're doing for the taxpayers and for our students and our teachers and our administrators on all of our campuses. But it falls on us that we have to be responsible for what kind of direction goes forth. So thank you, I appreciate the courtesy of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We're really excited to tell you all the work that's been done, and there's been a tremendous amount. What I want to first to explain, the book that we have here for you, in the very, very back is a copy of all these slides, and so the slides will be on the screen, of course, and then in each section, what the managers that I'm going to introduce you to in a minute, with the tab sections have the details of each campus, so you may want to really follow along with that, because those aren't on the slides. This has been a very, you know, a lot of work, but I think, I think you'll be pleased, and I want you to know that the plans that you'll hear from the managers tonight also reflect the guidance that we received from you in April, most notably the multipurpose redirection, if you will, and so that's allowed a number of other facilities to be completed. So first, I want to introduce the managers real quick. So what I need is about an hour to get through this. Now, we did exquisite detail with the bond oversight committee in three hours. We went through, we're going to try to do turbo time here with you and do that in about an hour, so we're not going to hit every detail, but we want to give you a general flavor. So with your indulgence, we'll be pretty snappy, because what we really want to get to is the changes from the bond language and really direction on how you want us to go forward. That's where we would really like to spend the time, so with your indulgence, we'll do that, and we'll go quickly. So first up, if you could please stand Prince Dumaran, I won't give you his, any of their projects, they'll do that for you, Chris Rizzuti, Scott Wilkins, Dina Johnson, and we've got, of course, you know, Bob, and Brad, and Saniago are the numbers guys, we've got to have those. And I'm a stand-in for Janaya this evening, who's out of town. Just briefly here, the presentations tonight, I'm going to just give you some general stuff so they don't have to each repeat it, I think it'll help time-wise. What we've got for you in blue, you'll see on each one of these exhibits in the map, is work that has been completed, and there's an awful lot of blue on each and every campus. What you have in green is projects, and they'll explain on each campus what is ahead of us that we think we can fund within the bond, assuming, again, that we get all the money that we're expecting to get, and it assumes the multipurpose, generally speaking, for every campus. And then what you'll see in yellow is items that are below the line, and the only thing that's below, things that are below the line are things that are in the bond language. And so if there's nothing below the line, then we're going to get to everything in that, for that campus, in the bond language. And then we have a category that's called basically everything else, things that weren't in the bond language that we still need to do, but we just don't have enough money to get there. So that's the general layout, and we'll run through each one of those on every campus. Some common definitions, things you've heard before, ADA improvements, everyone's got ADA improvements, we do a lot of that, we're not going to grind through each and every one of them, interim housing, we're working hard, we have a slide on that, I'll save that to the end, we have a, we started with 114, we're working our way to zero on that. Every site's had infrastructure improvements, wets and dries, and you've heard that a lot. I just mentioned the deferred maintenance summary, and that's really the everything else category of things we're not going to be able to get to. We won't go into any detail on what the specs and the design standards are, but what I really want you to know is that we don't just willy-nilly go randomly do these modernizations and new constructions. We have a song sheet we follow in terms of what's the level of improvement, and we're constantly changing that. What kind of lights do we want, air conditioning, blah, blah, blah. So there's a standard there to have a consistent level. And my commercial is, we've assessed, we needed a billion five, we assessed that back in 2008, and we probably, well, we certainly still need a billion five, it might be even more, but we have 928, and that's an awful lot of money, but it's not a billion five. So, things we aren't getting to have, no other reason is that we, you know, in a perfect world, we'd have that difference in those amount of dollars, and we don't have that. So I just want to keep, you know, reminding you of that. In terms of numbers, this is modernized core classroom, 441 specialty classrooms, new classrooms, new specialty, 669 classrooms have been completed since 2008, that's about 80 classrooms a year, or 2004, that is. That's a lot, in addition to tracks and ADAs and pools and libraries, and ahead of us, we have another 200 and some, whatever that math is. So, significant progress in this program. So our format for tonight, if you don't mind, is, I'm going to bring up each project manager and have them go through their respective campuses. Their campuses are tabbed, you can follow along that way, and first up, I have Dina, she'll do El Cap and Granite, and then we'll work in the new school, and we'll work through those, the rest of them. If you want, we can take questions during the presentation, but if you wanted to save them, we can, you know, move a little quicker, I would have you consider that, and I turn it over to Dina, and I thank you.
I have to adjust the microphone, because Katie is much taller than I am. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, great. I'm Dina Johnson, I am the project manager for El Capitan High School, and as you can see here, we're going to run you through a few of the, what we've kind of done, some pretty pictures, and then we'll get into the meat and potatoes of the campus. So, as you can see from this first slide, this was the science building that we did about three years ago, and as I see these smiling faces in front of me, a lot of you were at this presentation. This is eight classrooms, it replaced seven old portables on the campus. This is our track and field that we did, and on the picture on the right is the indoor bleachers, and we did indoor bleachers in our gymnasiums because it was due to an ADA issue through DSA. It kind of gives you an idea of what our old bleachers look like and what our new bleachers look like, and that's, that's real important, to see that major improvements on all of our campuses. I'm real proud of this project, because this has had my heart and soul for quite some time over at El Capitan High School. This is the ag department that we just finished, the kids started school in there, the first day of school, we've got anywhere from 500 to 600 kids that go through that buildings, those buildings through there daily. So I'll go into it a little bit more, but I just kind of wanted to give you, this was our CTE grant that we went for, it shows the modernization, it was six buildings that are included in this, this package that we did. This is the actual work going on over there. So as you can see, on the picture on the left, it shows you the building, the new classroom building, picture on the right shows you the barns in the back, the greenhouse, the storage building, and where all that equipment is sitting is where the new classroom went in. This is the proposed PE education complex that we've had a little bit of discussion in the past on, that we're proposing to you. In our bond language, it calls for a modernization of our current facility. Current facility, it's not laid out properly, it doesn't meet our Title IX needs, it doesn't meet the campus needs, and so we're proposing a new building there, and you can see all the site work that goes with it, we'll move the basketball courts in. The building itself is right in the budget of what our modernization of the building would have been, where our difference in dollars is coming is from the additional site work that we're needing to do with this. As you can kind of see, the fire lane will be moved to the outside of the building, which gives the kids a safe path of travel back and forth within the campus and fire lane not going down the center of the campus.
Dina, if I could, for one second, I want to encourage the board to keep in mind that at the end of the presentations tonight, you will be receiving a set of recommendations, and recommendations will come one campus at a time. So when you hear a proposal, like you're hearing right here about a change, there'll be a recommendation regarding that change coming to you later on. If you have specific questions that pop in your head right now as you're looking at this, I would encourage you to make notes, and then we'll walk back through each campus later on with the recommendations, and if you have concerns or questions about it, we can respond to them during that time. Thank you.
You're very welcome. So this is our new layout of the building that we're proposing to you. Our current building that we're using at the campus right now is approximately just under 19,000 square feet. This new building is 18,000 square feet. So, we're building them very similar, but we are not overbuilding it, we're not making it bigger than what we have right now. It does give us the ability to take care of our Title IX issues, which we have quite a few on this campus, but it does give us a chance to get through those Title IX. So as you can see, we've got boys and girls locker rooms, TE, the PE attendant, wrestling, showers, weight rooms, gives you a pretty good idea of what we've got going on there. This is El Capitan High School. So for those of you that aren't real familiar with El Capitan High School, we are in Lakeside, we are the home of the Vaqueros, the Fighting Vaqueros. We have about 1,700 kids that are at this campus in our enrollment. As you can see with the blue, as Katie told you, we have completed all of that dark blue. That's a lot, there's quite a bit down here. We have done 46 modernized classrooms, two of those classrooms are our special ed suites, so we've completed our special ed suites on this particular campus. We have done 11 new classrooms. Eight of those are from our science building, three are now down in our new ag department. We did 15 demo of old portables that were just in bad shape, we've gotten those off our campus. We have removed our 13 interim classrooms, so our interim classrooms on this campus are no longer there, we moved them over the summer, all gone. What we also need to, what we still have left to do, just to give you kind of a hint of what we have enough to do, because I know that will be Mr. Hoy's question, is we currently still have four core classes to do. That's going to be in our 300 building, and the 300 building, for those of you that don't know where it is, is right there. Then we have approximately 12 CTE classes to still finish up. So, we're proposing to you the new PE facility here, we're proposing, in our bond language, it calls out for multipurpose, as you can see, we've got it shown, whoops, I'm so sorry, we've got it shown right up, ah, it's shown right up there, there, ah, I do it every time. Katie was going to give me a better clicker. And this is where we've got it proposed at this particular time. So as you can see, we don't have a lot that we're bringing to you other than the proposal for the new PE complex. So, and El Capitan has a $74 million budget, we've expended approximately 39 million of that budget, so we're about halfway there. We're in pretty good shape on this particular campus. So that is El Capitan High School. Okay, Granite Hills High School. Granite Hills High School, this is the science building that, again, we did about three years ago, eight new classrooms. This is the 50-meter pool that you guys are all well aware of, it was in our bond language, it included the 50-meter pool, new tennis courts, new basketball courts. The pool, it was in our bond language, there was money that was put up for fundraising, because it is a 50-meter pool, the site put up all of their discretionary, the county of San Diego added in money also, so that's why this particular campus got the 50-meter This is our new 200 building that we just opened up in September, real proud of this particular building. It houses 21 classrooms, we demoed out 13 old portables, which in a minute, I'm going to show you some of those wonderful pictures. We're going to be doing the ribbon cutting on this project next Thursday at 12:45, would love to have all of you be there if you can. There are 10 academic core classrooms in this building, there is photo, 2D, 3D, culinary arts, TV film, four medical pathway, that is part of our CTE program. We have outdoor, which you can kind of see where the shade structure is, that's an outdoor teaching area. We also added new restrooms. Gives you a view from the second floor, and it gives you a view looking into this particular project. There's the old portables that we took down. You saw what we gave you, you saw what we took away, night and day. 60 and 130 right now currently under construction, will be done sometime in the spring. Granite Hills High School, Fourth Avenue in Madison, El Cajon High School, in El Cajon Valley, it is the home of the Eagles. Again, as you can see, the blue, we've done a lot in this campus with the blue. What we have left to do on this campus is, what we're proposing is, we had admin modernization and an admin addition. The admin addition just doesn't work, for those of you that know the campus, there's nowhere to put an addition in that little area. So we're proposing, and you can see the green on here, right up in this corner right here, is a new admin building that will have admin and student support services. We will tear down the 90 and the 100 building for it to go into its place, we will be able to take the 30 building, which is the current admin, and the 80 building, which has got labs in it now and the student support services in it, and turn those into 12 academic classrooms, which we are still lacking academic classrooms up spaces. We have a multipurpose that we've got shown up there, which is part of our bond language, that's what we're showing up here as we're going to do, and the modernization of the 230, which is our library and our current theater program. What is below the line on this particular campus is our food service and our 110, which is where our PE building, for those of you that aren't familiar with what that building is. So what we have on this campus is, we have a $90 million budget, we've expended approximately 56, so we're a little over that 50% range. This campus houses 2,600 kids, this is your largest campus in the district right now. We've done 34 modernizations, we've done, we're in the process of doing our two specialty, special ed suites right now, so those will be complete soon. We have 29 new classrooms, we've demoed 31 old classrooms, we've taken 10 of the 15 interim out, the balance of the five will go with the 60 and the 130 project being complete. So again, on this campus, we're in really good shape, very, very minor below the line. New High School in Alpine. New High School in Alpine is on the east part of Alpine, right off of Alpine Boulevard, for those of you that are not familiar with this. What you're seeing right there is 92 acres of land that we purchased, it's six parcels that take up the 92 acres. We will be building the school on approximately 41 acres of that 92 parcel. In June of 2009, we brought the EIR for your approval, you guys approved it at the June board meeting, and did the site selection in that. We purchased all the property, which is one of the resolutions that you gave us, 100% done, we own it, it's ours. We have done the design on the site, the design on the grading, we've completed the buildings. We are only designed on Phase 1, which is what was put into our language. We are working with some DTSC removal, which is the last little bit that we've got to do for DTSC, which is the Department of Toxic Substance. We've done the demo of the existing homes that were out there, those structures are now gone, to keep the district in, out of risk management with somebody going in there and starting a fire or whatever the case may be. And as of last week, I had our final meeting, it looks like, with Army Corps and the Viejas Tribal Council, and as of tomorrow, it looks like I'm getting my provisional permit, two and a half years of a lot of hard work that I've done. This kind of gives you some of the pictures, a lot of these you guys have seen, the renderings of what it could be. This shows you my grading of the 400,000 cubic yards of cut and fill, but we're not going to export and we're not going to import, so we're going to use all of our own dirt. This kind of tells you some of the agencies that I've worked with on the federal side, Army Corps, Fish and Game, on the state side, you see who all of them are, and all the other agencies that I'm working with, which is all of the San Diego Gas and Lights, AT&amp;T... with, which is all of the San Diego Gas and Lights, AT&T, right on down the line. So that's pretty much what I've got for the twelfth high school at this particular time. There's our layout of what our, as you can see, the green is our phase one only. We had to master plan it all because it's required for DSA, it's required for Army Corps, it's required for everybody, but what you're looking at in the green is our phase one only. And with that, I will reintroduce Katie Wright, who is now Janae Court for the day.
I'm not nearly as bubbly or energetic as Janae, but I'll try to do justice to the campuses that she's working on and doing a great job and well cared for by those folks. At Mount Miguel, this campus is in outstanding shape in my view. A lot of track and ADA work has been completed, building two hundred. There's a number of, on page twenty of your book, if you'd care to look, a number of the classroom buildings have been completed. The library has been modernized, six hundred, computer lab and art room. This campus did not get a new science building unlike all the others because it had one that was fairly new, having been modernized after a fire, I believe, in late nineties, early two thousands. As you can see, a lot of blue on this campus has been completed. Over sixty-four classrooms have been completed, ten student restrooms. All of their interim housing has been removed. Infrastructure has been completed. And everything going forward, which is in green, including a multipurpose, we believe is in budget and perfectly doable. And as soon as we get the green light to start moving, we'll be happy to do so. Nothing falls below the line on this campus as we currently see it. And I think this campus is a shining star in terms of how much has been accomplished and in terms of percentage complete on their campus. And we're really proud of that. So unless you object, I'm going to move along here. Next up is Chaparral. There's been some work on Chaparral's campus, certainly not as much as we would like to have accomplished at this point. We've got the synthetic track, the quad has been completed, there's been some restroom work completed, minor building fascia work. Direction that we had a couple of years ago under a previous superintendent was we wanted to take advantage of some CTE opportunities. We wanted to enlarge the campus. We certainly wanted to modernize the existing facilities. And so that was the planning direction that we undertook. We have designed the two new CTE buildings, which are out of DSA, they qualify for state money. The issue we have on this campus is we have eight million dollars and we have more than eight million dollars worth of work. When we get to the recommendations level or discussion later in the agenda, I think we'll go into that a little bit more detail. But suffice to say, we have significant needs there that the eight million dollar budget will not cover. And so we'd like to discuss that with you a little bit further. We've recently put in also two new gateway relocatables for that school population. And we have some additional discussion, I think Scott wants to initiate, if you would, on ECal.
Let me make clear that this is a non-bond issue, but since we have the governing board here today, we'd like to give you an idea that we, if it meets with your approval, to bring it back for official recommendation and board action, if that's your desire. Currently, the Lakeside Union School District operates ECal at Ucalypus Hills. This is East County Academy of Learning, it's in our special education program. You can see the counts of the students that are served there. It's basically all our kids. There's one potential periodic other high school student, I think that one was a Mountain Empire student. In addition, we have the Frontier Day Treatment Program in the parking lot at Mount Miguel and some relocatables out front. That serves twenty students, not the greatest location or environment. The issue, we would like to develop a district-owned and operated program facility that would combine both ECal and Frontier, and it would have several advantages.
Sorry.
One, we would save approximately three hundred thousand dollars a year. This is a combination between us generating high school revenue and operating a more efficient program, less transportation, more streamlined staff. As you can see, there are small structured learning environment to integrate with a school. And as continuing the theme that we've had for some time, reducing our non-public school and residential treatment placements. Go ahead, Katie.
Sorry.
And the biggest thing to me is Grossmont staff serves Grossmont students. So the plan, establish a facility at the Chaparral site, that's why we jammed it in here, because we were talking about Chaparral. No. And you have not seen it yet. We're giving...
Facility issue.
Well, we've got an idea. And it's, we can go back to the map and kind of tell you, again, what we're doing is pre-briefing you and we'd like to bring you back a more formal presentation at the board meeting. But the plan is to relocate currently owned and purchase a few that we are leasing today, modular buildings, and construct that facility and have our special education department develop programming and staff to run it. And these are kids, again, who have what are known as internalizing behaviors and mental health needs. Thanks, Katie. Go ahead. Total facility cost in the order of two million dollars. The funding source would be district capital facilities and the potential for generating some special education, new construction, state matching funds. One of the few pots of money that actually existed, exists and is still funded at the state level. So again, unless you direct us otherwise, we'd like to bring a formal recommendation and briefing at the next board meeting for you.
They have special ed matching funds for state level?
For new construction, Katie?
Yes, they do. We have a tremendous amount of eligibility we haven't been able to tap.
But we can with our program over at the Elite Academy?
Yes. But we have a tremendous amount and we'd have...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
In other words, the Elite Academy...
We can't tap it all.
We have more than they have.
Correct.
Elite Academy won't soak it all up.
That's correct. Right. Okay, so moving on, Valhalla. We've also had twelve classroom science building constructed on this campus, as well as ADA improvements to their, and the new track and field concession stand. And very limited, unfortunately, modernization work at this campus, and that is largely due to, we've had to undertake a study of this entire structure with DSA. And the study has to do with how fast the smoke rises versus how fast we can get kids out. And that's going to generate some additional costs. But I failed to mention that in addition to the science building and the other work I mentioned, we got a new roof on this last summer, it was about a million dollar project. And a couple of summers ago, we did air handling units, and that was like an eight million dollar project in the summer. So that was a Herculean effort. But as we look ahead, we are ready to undertake the design work on the balance of the campus and we need to, we need to modernize this entire structure. The issue here is we took a hit with that DSA requirement. They've got about four million worth of herd on us that's going to make it likely, at least at this point, that the multipurpose facility, which is in the bond language, is going to fall below the line. We can't afford it unless we do something different. In addition, I think we have an auto shop and the boys and girls PE that are in the bond language that we cannot afford. We have, that in the language was originally funded, but we felt we needed to really modernize that whole structure. Once you're in there, we've got to take care of the whole thing, not just parcel it out. So the issue is money. We don't have enough money to do everything we'd like to do on this campus. Elite Academy, we've discussed that quite a bit. I wasn't going to go in any detail there, other than to say we've started the planning work on that per your direction the last couple of board meetings. District office, as you know, we've started the work on that, the big shovel turn. We've done a lot of hazardous abatement and turning dirt and all kinds of exciting stuff. And two thousand thirteen December, we should have a sparkling new building. Next up, Scott Wilkins will discuss his projects. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you guys and show you what we've got going on and the direction we're headed, hopefully. This is Montevista High School, my alma mater. I was there in class of seventy-nine. Things hadn't changed very much until we got the bond. It's going good now. So as you can see, this is the new science building. And we just finished the library. Later in the month, we're going to have ribbon cutting out there. You can see that brand-new facility out there. We've got, the building four hundred's been completed and the five hundred building. I wanted, I brought that slide because I want to show we have modern shapes and colors. It's no longer stucco boxes anymore. So we have exciting, modernized places for these kids to be educated in. And I'm really proud of the fact that we're doing, we're on the vanguard, we're not looking as old and rundown as we had in the past. We're doing good things with the bond dollars. On the left, you see the new guidance facility, that's the old location of the library. And I just wanted to illustrate that all those relocatable buildings have left. Those, they're being lifted up and they're trucked off and the parking lot has been restored. And the campus is looking much better for that. Right now, this is, if you look on the top, this is Sweetwater Springs Boulevard, the top of the campus right there. All the blue you can see is all the work that's been accomplished so far. And I'm very impressed with the work that we've done so far. I hope Randy appreciates that right now. If you can see the front, a lot of general education was done first. We removed a bunch of buildings, put a brand-new science building in it. There's eight classrooms, that was the first building you saw on the left. That's a brand-new science building, state-of-the-art. Nice design, very good colors, it's very well accepted by the community out there. You can see the additional work we just finished up right now. We have the five and six hundred building, this one and that one. And we had a medley that's just finished. We had new restrooms that we were lacking in the area. And the ADA ramp is new, we had no access down to the stadium. A lot of issues have been corrected. Over here, we see the new chiller and boiler. We had mechanical issues. We folded all these things up into a project that we're just wrapping up now and I wanted to illustrate how much, how far we've gotten. In conversations with Randy, we've looked at below the line, at risk right now. If budgets can't be massaged, what drops off the list would be the admin facility. He feels the students come first and I think everybody probably feels the same way. So moving forward, fiscally, we're in pretty good shape. Seventy-two million dollar budget, we're about forty-five million dollars into it. We have a plan to get through it. If there's a one area that's at risk, it would be the admin for that particular campus. El Cajon Valley High School, very proud of that campus also. It's a beautiful place. It's old, if you know that, it's nineteen fifty-two, nineteen fifty-one, post-World War II designs. But we've got new facilities out there. This is a brand-new science building out there, you see right there. And, so you go back one time. The science building, and we had a new field and track, that's done. In the background, you see some of the old, they still look old even in that small picture. I've got some big plans for that and I'd like to talk to you about that. We have the new welding facility, East County, that's where the welders come from and that's where they're trained. And that building is also special ed. So if you look on the, this side of the building, special ed facility, I'm so proud of that facility. It's brand-new, it's right in the campus. We pushed the building out to get more square footage. It's a beautiful addition to the campus. It's not in the back, it's not relocatable, it's not hidden. This is a very well-designed, very well-thought-out structure and very, very proud of it. On the welding side, where you can see we had, rather than ribbon cutting, we had a chain cutting. So that was pretty fun. A lot of you guys were there. This is inside the welding facility. You can see the, it's all new and fresh and people are learning a trade, they're going to get out of school and be able to earn a living. Right now, this is the current work that's going underway right now. We had the seven hundred building, north and south, that have been completed. Students are in right now, we're working out the little bugs that happen. On the left side right there, you can see a tunnel that a lot of people don't know about. It's under the front of the buildings, from the one hundred building all the way back to the five hundred building. It's kind of neat, one of those things you don't know about. There it is, it's already covered up, so that's your opportunity to see it unless you want to get down and dirty. Right now, it's being drywashed. I toured at the site with my CM today. It's, drywall's going in. We have a, there's going to be a wigwam program that's in there, a restaurant, a commercial restaurant. It's going to be teaching kids how to work in the kitchen, how to work in the dining room, how to food prep. We're doing good things in East County. We're teaching kids how to get a job and I thank you guys for having the vision to support us. This is awesome. Right, you can see inside, this is the seven hundred building on the inside, the seven hundred north. You can see where we're no longer the low point as far as the community looks. There's apartment buildings next to us, we actually look better than the apartment buildings now. We're doing good things now in El Cajon. This shows the progress, the blue that you see. There's a lot of done, that's done. This is seven hundred right here and the four hundred is underway right there. That's the building you just saw with the tunnel running up the front of the whole campus right there. We've got the, prior we had the five hundred, then the one hundred, the two hundred done. We have the new, the welding facility and special ed right there. We have a new science building. And so I kind of have a bold plan because it's not really working. It's an old campus, it's undersized, we have seventeen hundred and forty-five kids out there right now. It wasn't designed to come anywhere near that. And so I kind of like to show you, this is kind of like existing situation and I'll flashback to what our plan is. So as you can see, I'd like to get rid of some of the old admin stuff that's blocking the campus off. We have no front door, people don't know how to get to the campus, don't know how to get on. So we propose a pretty ambitious plan to transform this particular campus. And a lot of buildings in red would go away. So that's the old theater right there, there's no way to make it ADA compliant. And it's across a big parking lot, so the kids actually march across the parking lot to get to their classes and try to run back. There's the dance, there's, NPR would incorporate the cafeteria funds. We would have an economy of scale, we'd be able to take the dollars for remodeling buildings and maybe three hundred, we can't, it would spend more money to try to rehab a building than we would to actually get a new building. So taking the square footage away and replacing it with new, we're not doing too much to add onto the campus, we're just doing it in an intelligent sort of way. This superimposed over this, as you can see the little red outlines, I'm sure you can see that, those are the buildings that illustrates what's going to be removed. And that's a concept of how it would be replaced. So you can see that there's not a lot of additional square footage. We got new facilities. We have, you can see through the campus from Madison all the way through the campus, we're no longer ISO in the community. We have a very nice, new, modern campus. These kids deserve that. And we're getting there and I think we have the budget dollars to do it. I think we're going to be in pretty good shape. And right now, it kind of shows what we're going to demo. That backs up the red outline that you saw that shows a rough increase of six thousand square foot. That's nothing compared to the rest of the campus. We're demoing a lot of the old stuff out of there, making open spaces, using space intelligently. And I've got a great planning team, it's probably Watson Architects, space planning. This is going to be a good, a good thing. This is, I believe, our best project. And moving along to Helix Charter, Chris Rizzuti.
Hello, everyone. I'm Chris Rizzuti, project manager for Helix Charter High School. At Helix, we've completed our science building, similar to what we've done on many other campuses. Ten classrooms. Here's an interior shot. Pretty standard, but fabulous by comparison to what they used to have. We've completed the library in the three hundred building. The one hundred building has been modernized. Standard classrooms all over the campus have been modernized. Four hundred and five hundred building. And we've done a culinary and special ed suite in the five hundred building as well. And we're currently underway with our performing arts complex. It's actually quite a bit further along than this. Now, they've already started putting exterior sheeting on and waterproofing and started in with the stucco siding. So things are moving right along there. This is our second oldest campus. It's about sixty years old. We've got over twenty-four hundred students here. Nearly seventy of the classrooms have been modernized already. And you can see here, the whole core of the campus has been completed, fully modernized. That includes, I mentioned, the library, culinary and special ed suites. Also, on this campus, back in two thousand nine, when we were working on the master plan, one of the primary concerns that was brought forth through that process was the main entrance to the campus is here off of University Avenue. And you have to negotiate a very awkward intersection between university and some of the other side streets to get up into this very small parking lot that is adjacent to the administration building. I'm sure many of you have been there and experienced that. It's not very efficient and doesn't really work for the community and creates quite a traffic jam back in the community during, when school's in session. So in order to attempt to alleviate that congestion, the idea was put forth and ultimately accepted to flip-flop the main access to the campus. So the plan includes, excuse me, the plan includes placing the Performing Arts Center at this location along Lowell Street and adjacent to the main parking area for the campus. Also, to build a new administration building at the new front door and a new front end for the gymnasium. And of course, modernizing our other existing classrooms. So that this whole edge of the campus would be completely new and create a new front door for this campus. One of the things we ran into through that planning process was the accessible pathways that were required to get into the campus from this side. The cost of the site work to rework this to make it all accessible was not originally factored into our budgeting. And so we've experienced some cost overruns on this campus to date. And our plan is to squeeze the cost out of the future planned projects, which include the girls' and boys' PE, the 1300 building, and the 1100 series, and a couple other projects. But basically, to scale back what we're doing in all the rest of the buildings to make up that budget deficit. So, we expect to be able to finish this campus. And part of that cutback is going to be, you can see that there was quite a bit of site work planned in the master plan, and a lot of that site work is not going to be completed. That'll help us get back into budget. So, that's, that's the, that's the plan for Helix. We've done some great things there, and we expect to get a lot more done. At Grossmont High School, we've completed our, I'm sorry, the PE building for boys and girls at the end of the track. We've also completed the Child Development Center. And the science building, ten, another ten classrooms. The pool shade structure and pool deck was completed. Building 500, where the library is, was complete, was modernized. The 700 building was modernized. 800 building was modernized. And we're under construction with the Humanities Building. Hopefully, you've had a chance to get out there to take a look at what we've done. We've got a lot of steel studs going up right now, and exterior sightings going on, and things are moving along really well. This was our topping-out ceremony, some of you were there. We also found during the renovation of our 500 building, a fountain that was actually buried, as a joke, by one of the previous classes, I think it was class 61. But, they came clean during the renovation of the 500, said, "Go dig over here and you'll find the old fountain." So, they pulled it out, cleaned it up, put it back in service, and it's really a neat little feature, but kind of a fun thing that the bond program exposed for this campus. So, Grossmont is the oldest campus in the district, so it's ninety years old, plus or minus. Serves about twenty-five hundred students. And you can see with the dark blue, we've completed, modernized, or are under construction with over seventy classrooms. That includes the library, the science, the PE facility, the Child Development Center. We're doing the special ed suite in the Humanities Building. We have the auto shop already under contract through the Humanities Contract. And you can also see here, we've, excuse me, we've completed the first six of the tennis courts for this campus. That turned out very nice. If you haven't had a chance to go see that, I recommend it. Our next step here is, being the oldest campus, you know, it kind of had a, an organic development, shall we say. It wasn't very organized, you know? People, through the years, put facilities in, you know, the needs of the campus just kind of grew. This looks like a good spot, we'll put it here. It was, it was kind of piecemeal, one at a time. So, in order to try to improve the whole arrangement of the campus, and meet the new and current and future needs of this campus, the proposal was to, excuse me, to put a new administration and arts classroom building in the front. And that project would demolish the 100 building, the admin building, the special ed offices, Building C, and the GRC. And that would give us a new face, a new front-door face to the campus. Also, kind of the sister project to that was originally planned for a PAC to go in this location, which would include the dance, the band function, the choral, digital music. We're also planning to put the museum, Grossmont Museum, in that facility, and of course, an auditorium. So, that would have completed the whole reorganization of the front of the campus. Building 200 would be demolished, Building 300 would be demolished. Unfortunately, that plan would cause us to run out of money at that point in this, on this campus. And so, you see here in the yellow, the 600 building, the 900 building, the old gym, and the cafeteria, which are all in the bond language, would go unfinished if we were to pursue that. After we were directed to look at other alternatives, we did propose to the campus to include, or to remove the auditorium piece from the Performing Arts Center and just do performing arts classrooms, which would be still the music and the dance and the choral, digital music, and the museum. That actually frees up other classroom space for other functions on the campus to consolidate. In the 600 building, the 900 building, we relocate the wrestling program to the old band room. So, it's kind of a shell game that we're trying to work out to get everything to fit. And by doing that, too, it would allow us to complete some of the other bond projects that were, that were going to fall below the line. So, we went through that process. In the end, the site is still committed to a performing arts complex. And so, but what we're proposing is that we go to a community workshop and try to develop community consensus on how we should redevelop this campus. Because there's, there's a lot of moving parts, it's very complex, and it already has a multipurpose room in the old gymnasium. So, it wouldn't make sense to do another multipurpose space for this particular campus. There's a lot of other reasons why that wouldn't necessarily be the best and appropriate course of action. So, we're recommending that the, that the board authorize us to move forward with a community exercise to, you know, look at the priorities for this campus and where we really should be headed at this point. And next up is Prince Dumran.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As my colleague Chris just mentioned, my name is Prince Dumran. And tonight, I'll be presenting on West Hills High School, Steel Canyon High School, and Santana High School, and all in that order. And there you go. I was looking for that. And all of which, I'm happy to report, are in good standing. So, to begin, I'd like to start with West Hills High School. To just give you a little bit of background, West Hills High School is located in Santee, right off the 52 freeway on Mass Boulevard. It is the 10th high school in the district, and so, it's one of the newer high schools. And because of that, the provisions under the bond were somewhat limited. But despite that fact, you'll find that we were able to accomplish a lot. So, if you take a look at the screen there, well, first, I'd like to go over just a little bit of the bond language. The bond required a, the construction of aquatics facility, construction of new track and field, and provide permanent water and sewer extensions to the playfield. So, what you're seeing there on the screen is the newly-built aquatics facility. Just to give you some general info, the swimming pool there is at 25 yards by 25 meters. The building you see out back houses a concession stand, a team room, a boys' and girls' restroom, and office space for site staff. Next slide, and you'll see the track and the only blue field in the district. And in the corner here, you'll see a small building, which is a concession stand and a boys' and girls' restroom. And to the, and right in front of it, over here, is additional ADA parking, both of which we installed to allow this part of the campus to meet current ADA requirements. Next slide will be the site map here. And as you already know, everything outlined in dark blue are projects we completed so far. You've got the aquatics facility here, the track and field here, and we just finished the exterior modernization of the social science building. And currently, we are upgrading the audiovisual and the theatrical lighting in the performing arts complex, and that's about 50% complete. Everything you see outlined in light blue here are light modernizations, and at this campus, that included upgrading audiovisual data and network systems and fire alarm systems to all 83 classrooms and all site support services buildings. And what you don't see also are underground utilities we installed around the playfields here. And that allows this part of the campus to just drain more efficiently, and the flooding and ponding and erosion issues they were experiencing beforehand are no longer existent. So, that completes West Hills.
I know we're going to try and hold him, but what we're not going to get to, and this may not be a question for you as much as for staff, what we may not be getting to is campus HVAC upgrades. I think that's kind of interesting. Campus-wide ADA upgrades not shown. I find that a little bit concerning because we were under a magistrate mandate to fix all of our ADA and Prop H. So, why are we not fixing the ADA on the campus? Is that site work, or what does, what does that mean that we're not going to get to ADA if we were mandated to fix all of our ADA? Who am I looking at?
Well, I think maybe I could partially answer that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, for the HVAC and the ADA upgrades, we are, I'm not sure how close we are next in line for state-matching funds, but that was the, that was the funding avenue we were looking into sometime next year. But other than that, everything under the bond has been, has been met and, and, I don't know, Katie, you want to interject on that?
Well, like everything else, deferred maintenance, some of these items fall on the deferred maintenance list, and as funding becomes available, we'll do that. But as Prince mentioned, I think we have about four points, something, 4.5 million in state funding that this campus generated, that we're eligible for, that we're in the pipe for. And when those funds come in, that will be available to continue to address needs at this campus and others in the district.
Okay, I guess I was a little bit confused because this campus needs beyond Prop U, but if we have matching funds with Prop U for HVAC or ADA...
Every campus has needs beyond Prop U, and that, and we're just trying to list those and give kind of a general list of all the things that we don't have the money to do right now, today.
Okay.
But this campus has, will have, at the completion of the work that's underway, will have completed all the bond language work that's required.
Oh, okay, I guess that's my question. ADA is not a required, is not required? Am I missing something here?
There is ADA requirements across all campuses that we, we'll try to do with incrementally with construction. We won't necessarily get to all of it, but I think we got the vast majority of it here, right? Okay.
Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, but the whole world of ADA is constantly emerging and evolving. It's like one of those things you may never get done with because the standards that come along are continually upgraded. So, even under the court order that we're following, what we're demonstrating is all the progress we're making to the current code. But at the end of the day, there still may be things that have evolved, and the facilities that we constructed some time ago don't meet the current code.
That's my concern, because that was a huge issue.
We're still in great shape with regard to our court oversight on the ADA piece.
All right. And one thing I'd like to point out also is roughly about 125,000 of deferred maintenance money in the last year alone has been allocated to just chopping at the ADA, ADA portion. Okay, so next is Steel Canyon. What's that? Okay, Steel Canyon High School is the, is the newest campus in the district. So, again, like West Hills, the provisions under the bond were somewhat limited, but you'll also find that we were able to accomplish quite a bit. The bond only called out for the construction of a new aquatics facility, and that's what you're looking at here. It has the same dimensions and capabilities as the, as the one in West Hills, so there's, there's not much more to say. Next slide is the, is the site map there. You'll see that they also constructed new track and field. You see the aquatics facility here, they had that resurfacing of the tennis courts, and they had a light modernization of all 68 classrooms and site support services, and that included IP clock and speaker upgrade. And also, to meet Title IX requirements, you'll see these little squares here, new dugouts were installed for varsity baseball and varsity softball, as well as two new scoreboards. And that completes Steel Canyon. And also, Steel Canyon, in the last eighteen months alone, about $250,000 of deferred maintenance have been allocated to just fix certain issues that were not covered under the bond.
Scoreboards sometimes are donated, and they may do a match. Were those donated, or did that come out of bond dollars?
That was their site discretionary money.
Oh, site discretionary, thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, next up is Santana High School. Santana High School is one of the older campuses in the district. About two years, we'll, we'll be hitting our 50-year mark. So, so because of its age, a lot was required under the bond. And so, just to go scroll through the pictures here, you'll see the newly-completed interior of the library. The computer lab right here is also inside the library. And you'll see the exterior of the library here. You'll also see the new track and field, concession stand, and announcer booth on the varsity's softball field to meet Title IX requirements.
Was that the only announcer booth that we built in the bond program? I just need to know.
I think so. And the two photographs you're looking at here is building 800. Building 800 is considered D Trophy building for Santana High School. Santana's always elected the CTE path with regards to its curriculum, and this houses the majority of those programs. So, you're looking at the second-story workstation here in Building 800. You're looking at the roll-up doors for the automotive technology program in that building. And on these two photos, you're looking at the interior of the Building 200. This is the math building, you'll see the modernized classroom here and exterior here. And what you'll find is the, these are full modernizations that include exterior, interior, utilities, technology, and FFNE. And you'll find that this type of modernization is consistent with all the buildings we've touched so far.
And if students learn math better if there are no seats, right? They do it standing up?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we were finishing up the floor. But you're right, you're right. And this is the current project we've completed, and it's a 30,000-square-foot plaza. It includes some seat wall, concrete seat walls, shade structures, and various landscaping. And this took, replaced 12 old raccoon-infested relocatable buildings. And skunks. Yeah. So, here's the site map, and again, you'll see all the, the projects we've completed so far outlined in blue. You'll see the, some of the buildings we have not completed yet, and that are provided in the bond. We're about 58% complete through the whole master plan, and we have about 23 million left. And one thing I'd like to point out is that this structure here is the, is the proposed area for the multipurpose facility. And Santana has embraced the option of moving forward with a multipurpose facility, and in doing so, and with the financial savings that we are seeing, we are able to complete everything outlined in the bond. Nothing will be moved below the line, and there'll be no more interim housing on this campus. And that concludes Santana High School.
It does appear that the football announcer's booth at the stadium is not being redone.
Yes.
I find that very offensive.
Whoa. I know. Thank you.
I happen to like your shack.
So, I gave you the commercial already. I mean, I, we went pretty quick, but there's been an awful lot of work done. And I want to summarize for you what, this, this is the work that's currently scheduled below the line. It's on each one of those sheets, and we summarize it again in our recommendations and our discussions a little bit later. But by and large, a whole bunch has been done. These items represent a summary of all the pages of stuff that's, that wasn't in the bond language. So, yes, again, still a lot of work to do. So, I think we did good. We got through that in less than an hour. Bob's next to talk about deferred maintenance, and then we'll go into the recommendations and discussion.
Before I get started on this slide, just to bring you up to date, the FIT inspection was done here recently, completed. It's called a Facility Inspection Tool is the terminology for it. That's the one that checks out the classrooms to see that they're suitable for students to be in. And the good news is that we, all the schools scored between 91 and 97%, which is considered to be good. And we had one, which was the Reach Academy, that scored 100%, which is excellent. So, the schools, from the student's perspective, are all in good condition. When we add that on to the inspection that we're doing for the shops, we'll, we'll know whether, whether the outside of the, and the systems are in decent condition. What you see on the chart is something that you've seen before. In this case, what's been done has been broken down by school site, and... In this case, what's been done has been broken down by school site, and it's been refined a little bit. The number right here, the 17 million of non-essential, was 14 million previously, and so, all you're seeing here is a little bit of refinement. But this is basically the same thing you've seen before, broken down by school site. So, I won't belabor it unless you have any questions.
Could you take a minute, Bob, just to talk about the columns and how they relate to one another and the numbers on the bottom line?
Sure. So, this is the 58 million. That's over 10 years. That was a number that you've seen previously that we started with. What I did is I went down school site by school site and looked at what might be essential versus non-essential based on our bond program. And what that did is, this is what I'll call a non-essential work that's needed out of this 58 million in terms of buildings. That allowed 41 to remain in there as potentially essential. Took off half of the site work, brought this down to 7 million. And when you finish subtracting that out, you have $33 million that potentially have essential work that needs to be done on the campus. We talked about using, of accomplishing that with the earned escalation that we didn't use on the buildings to go against that number, as well as the inspections that we're doing by our shop forces, which will tell us, you know, whether that 33 is all essential, in other words, needs to be done or not. So, can I answer your question?
Okay. So, the next, if you're following along in the book, the next three pages are really the summary of the issues. And one category of issues, if you will, is interim housing that I'll walk us through, if you don't mind, and then turn it back over to Ralph on the next two pages. But in April, when we first reported to you, we had 114 interim housing units spread across the district. And of course, we pay monthly rent on that, and combined with, you know, the units that we've had over a long period of time, we've exceeded our interim housing budget. Your direction at the time, which we wholeheartedly concur with, is get rid of those things as fast as you can. So, in some cases, we could, and many of the campuses stepped right up and said, "Okay, we can yank these out right now." So, since April, we've removed 67 units. By the end of the year, we'll have another couple remaining, and then by April of '13, we'll have another 28. And those are tied to completion of classrooms, as you would expect. So, the discussion then centers around, what about the rest, and how fast can we get rid of those? I'll start at the bottom. The easy ones are the units that are at Santana that house the district staff on an interim basis until the district office is complete. So, as soon as that work is finished, boom, those will go. The bond is not paying for those. That's the district office budget, so that, kind of an easy one. El Cajon and Montevista have three and four interim housing units respectively that they would like to purchase. I think they're willing to take them off, but they're units that are being rented that they believe have, that they have an ongoing need for. I think at El Cajon, maybe tied to the KIA grant, if that goes away, it might be a little bit more of a stretch to say we might need those. We're suggesting that, as a superintendent's recommendation and staff recommendation, that if the campus wants to keep them, then they can start paying rent on them effective January out of their own respective budgets, not out of the bond dollars. And if there's an ability to buy them without a penalty at the state, because there's an issue if we buy them, we take a hit on our state funding eligibility, and we don't want to do that. We want to reserve that for modernizing structures. It's not entirely clear that we'd take a hit. If we're saying if we would take a hit, we shouldn't buy them. If we would take a hit and the campus wants to retain them, fine, you can pay for the rent out of your respective budget effective in January. So, that might not be a popular recommendation, but that is the recommendation we are making. As well as at Helix, there's eight units there. We're suggesting if you want to keep them. We can't find, we don't see a rationale today. I'm sure there is one, not, you know, anything beyond that, but the bond program doesn't need to carry them, especially since we've added new classrooms to that campus, and each and every campus in terms of science buildings and such.
And the key there on the Helix one is they're interested in buying them.
Right.
And that would have a negative impact on our overall program.
Right.
So, what we're recommending is if they're going to keep them, they'd have to get into a rental arrangement, which would then protect us from the negative hit on our capacity.
Right.
Also, probably not a popular recommendation.
Are we at the point of discussing this? I have a concern, and so, you know, I'm willing to be convinced otherwise. But it seems to me that we give schools a budget. There better be a pretty good reason to spend it on interim housing versus some other educational. I mean, are we, I like them having the freedom to choose, but I'd like to know what they're giving up by choosing to have interim housing. Are they giving up programs? Are they going to have higher class sizes? I mean, what are they, what are they giving up by spending the money on rent?
I don't know that we know the answer to that. This is a recommendation that we aired out a little bit with Mike Lewis. I don't think that he's come back and said, "Yeah, I gotta have them." But we couldn't resolve this one by the time we got to this meeting.
I'm not just talking about Helix.
Right, right.
I'm talking about...
El Cajon Valley and Montevista.
Montevista, you know, I mean, I can be convinced that it's a good idea, but I don't know what the, you know, trade-off is.
Aaron, do you want to comment on the El Cajon Valley relocatables? Come on up. While she's walking up, we'll hold that question for Randy Montesanto. He's the one who's at open house with his child right now, but he'll be back.
The three that we have are actually ones that were believed to be bought and then traded, so that they were purchased in another location on campus, and then it was eventually traded with the district. So, whether or not that happened...
I don't understand what you said.
Oh, okay. What I was saying is that the site had previously purchased relocatables that were eventually traded for interim housing. So, the belief was that these were swapped at some point. With the current KIA grant and the number of teachers we have on our campus, we're using these. So, I think that if we don't have KIA, we may not need these three, but at this point in time, we need them to get through the school year. And some of our interim housing, as far as if PE comes up and other things, we were using these areas, because we've been using the 300 building to use a lot of our interim housing. We've been doing a lot of switching in our 300 buildings. So, that's why those three are still there. That was kind of the question and investigation that we were doing.
So, if they were originally purchased, then why are we renting them? I mean, I know I'm half asleep, you know, here, but this doesn't make sense to me. If they bought them, why then are we charging them rent for them?
We're going to make every effort not to return to the interim housing provider units that we own. In other words, if we own those things, we're not giving them back. It sounds like we just need to sort it out. I'm not familiar with the issue.
Somewhere along the lines between the Molleson Annex and Special Ed and these three relocatables that we have, things got swapped around, and we're working on it.
Can I help them?
Sure, Scott. Love it. Oh, I didn't take it that way. No, 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 I just, you know, I've been there for a year, and so, the history I'm not quite up on, I'm still working on that. Go ahead, Scott. Thank you.
This is prior to my involvement with it, but to understand, talking to the MSF, she has been there. What happened was when the infrastructure went through the campus, some of the buildings were located in places that they were just in the way. They wouldn't survive a move. And so, the bond program leased new buildings, put them out of the way while the buildings that were owned by the campus prior were destroyed. So, now we have leased buildings that are new equipment that replaced buildings that we had owned in the past. We still have lease obligations on them. They're still there, and that's why we're trying to work through it. We don't own the ones that produce new equipment. We do not own. Yes.
So, you see this as a messy issue. And what we'll do is, we've also needed some assistance in helping in some places, and I don't mean here, but we've needed help in emphasizing the need to get rid of these units. And there's a lot of this, and at the end of the day, we're trying to get rid of all of them. So, I think that in general, we would like to propose that if a campus can demonstrate a need, and they can buy them, they should, and if not, and we can demonstrate that to the superintendent, then we would ask for the site to pay for them.
And we also have the issue of whether it's an impact to our state facility funding eligibility.
Right. But I guess what we're looking for tonight is, are these general parameters okay with you? And if so, we'll continue to move down this road.
I have a follow-up question to that. So, they're being used for classrooms, right? What's our, it'd be nice, Katie, maybe, and I meant to ask you this a long time ago, on this, if I could have what the capacity is for each of our campuses? What do we call that, the functional capacity on each one of our campuses, Scott? Okay. So, we are building to the functional capacity on all of our sites.
At the end of the bond program, yeah.
But by the end of the bond program, we will have done that. So, the question is, are these classrooms just for the interim till we get to the end of the bond program? Or are we able to touch every need on our classrooms to accommodate the functional capacity on each of our sites?
A lot of moving parts in this whole thing. It has to do with what our class sizes are, whether we have additional funding like KIA, which requires reduced class sizes that generate a need for more classrooms. It... We won't build anything based on KIA funding. We know that that's unlikely to go beyond the current year. Right. It also gets to the issue of what we call traveling teachers and a standard that needs to be implemented across the district about whether every teacher gets their own home classroom that they can stay in during their prep period. So, a lot of moving parts, including functional capacity.
I'm not necessarily looking for a response right now because I have sort of, what, the response I'd ultimately want would include issues such as state matching funds and all these other variables that end up feeding into this issue. But I'm looking at eight rooms at Helix remaining after 2013. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, through all the construction that's gone on at Helix, have we increased the capacity of Helix to house students? And if so, how much? And if you don't know the answer, that's fine. I just, I want to kind of lead you through the process of my thinking. And is this, in effect, a request to increase the capacity of Helix? And if that is so, does it impact state funding issues? And if it increases the capacity of Helix, does that mean Helix is increasing their enrollment to the detriment of the Grossmont district in general? So, I know that's going to require sort of a combination of answers for several people. And again, you don't need to answer that now, but I do want that question answered.
Right. Okay.
Are we ready for the next page? If you turn to page 96, it's also up on the screen. We're going to, Katie, why don't you do a quick orientation on the colors here?
Okay. Okay, so, the purpose of this, these two pages actually, is to aggregate the departures from the bond language. There are three categories, if you will. The pink is those related to funding issues, and generally, funding is not adequate. The yellowish, goldish is where we're asking to construct new where the bond language said modernize. And then the blue is CTE-related issues, mostly programs that aren't relevant or existing anymore at respective campuses.
Okay, thank you. And so, we'll take it one campus at a time, and it will not be the same sequence as we went through in the earlier part of the presentation. And we actually start with two of the campuses that have some issues, and the first one being Grossmont. And I want to editorialize just briefly. Grossmont's project is probably one of the projects, one of the campuses, that has traveled the greatest distance from its original 2008 Long Range Master Plan proposal. And it was largely impacted by the recommendations that came forward in 2009 around performing arts centers, and also about the enthusiasm that was generated around career technical education appropriately, but sadly, which we did not get as money, dollars, as we thought we were going to get when we headed down that path. You heard earlier from the project manager that it is our oldest campus. It's 90 years old. And it did grow over time without the benefit of a carefully thought-out master plan towards its end appearance. And if you walk the campus from the student parking lot at the front now back towards the final new building, which is the Humanities Building that we recently topped out, you can still see that the campus has sort of a pieced-together look, and that some of the buildings that are more, have been around a while, senior classroom buildings, if you will, still are going to require some attention. But that original plan in the bond has been modified to the point where that, I really think we need to stop and replan Grossmont. The plan that emerged after 2009 had, if you remember the map that you looked at today, and if you want to go back, you can see the map for Grossmont in your booklet. Just look for the Grossmont tab, which I'm doing right now, and there it is. And you open that section up, and you can unfold the map. And if you would orient, you're looking to the, let's start at the front of the campus. You see the word Admin and Arts. That is located right now where, if you're familiar with, where we currently have our Ed Services Division in the building in front of the current principal's office building. That's that space. And then, the arts wing of that building extends through a couple of other buildings that are there, including the location of the Child Development Center and some other buildings, such as that. To the right, you see NPR Classroom Building, and you see the green outline there. The white outline was the outline of the 2009-developed Performing Arts Center for that campus. It was huge. It was 39,000 square feet. And so, between those two buildings, you had what became a brand-new entrance to the campus. Now, you should know that the 2008 Master Plan did not provide for Performing Arts Center on this campus. It provided for a conversion of the old gym, which you will see there in yellow, to a multipurpose room. So, the migration that occurred in thinking and planning between '08 and '09 was dramatic on the Grossmont campus. And so, the plan that was put out in 2008, if you can now think of where the current district office is functioning in the old 300 Classroom Building, that building was planned for demolition, but the 200 Building in front of it was going to stay. And there was going to be a small little addition to the 300 Wing to make it a student body's office. So, yeah, go ahead.
So, the, where we have the NPR Classroom within the footprint of the Big Pack building, is that where the administration...
That's where we currently have the district office, yeah, right. Our temporary quarters are there. And so, we've shrunk it down now to a recommendation that includes a smaller footprint and a multipurpose facility with multipurpose classrooms. And then, we just get into a series, a chain of events, a domino effect on this campus that involves... that involve the Old Gym, that involve the Old Bandroom, that involve the cafeteria, that involve the 600 and 900 buildings. And that is why the recommendation for Grossmont is that we open a 90-day window to revisit the plans for this campus. We can tell you that there's a lot of interest among the Grossmont community, and it is our flagship campus, around the issues of the arts. They have a strong band program. They have a strong vocal music program. They have a strong performing arts up and down the line. I'm not going to mince words. They see what's happening at Helix. They have an interest in having a good option for the students at Grossmont High School as well. And so, I think before we spend too much more time trying to piece together a compromise of what occurred between '08 and '09 and where we're going, we're going to have to revision this campus a little bit. And now, if you go back to my recommendations, which I'm in... Oh, go ahead, Dave.
As I look at the map, it shows the NPR, obviously, to be done, and then, below the liner, the Old Gym, the cafeteria, 600, 900. Correct? Based on the map?
Correct.
So with an NPR, we're still short of funds for those?
Yes. If you look at the recommendation, recommend a replanning effort that involves the school community and leadership to ascertain campus priorities and needs, and consider an increase of this campus budget from between $5 and $10 million.
Okay. And what is the status of the Old Gym and cafeteria? I mean, are these historical landmarks, or...
Well, there is...
Or, I mean, is there an interest in the Grossmont community in maintaining at least the facade of the building or the building itself? You know, maybe Dan can tell us.
I see everybody running in front, but I want to make sure Dan Barnes is a part of the party to talk about those issues, because those are very important questions about this campus.
Yes. The Old Gym, we consider it a historical landmark, so we want to keep that. We want to keep the facade. We want to keep that as part of it. The cafeteria is an older structure, but we've increased our free and reduced lunch, and we need a cafeteria, too. So not that we... The back structure is a classroom. It's our technology lab, and part right now is book storage. So it's being used.
And Dan, if I can comment a little bit on the cafeteria, based on conversations you and I have had in the past. The cafeteria, serving area inside the cafeteria, if you think, is really no longer used for that purpose. That is used for, I think, as Dan just said, it's like a computer lab...
Sorry, 2020 classroom.
E2020 classroom, things like that. Now, the kitchen, there's a great interest in an upgrade on the kitchen because, as Dan mentioned, they are now serving more lunches. They're serving more kids who are on lunch program. And our food services program believes that by increasing the capacity of the kitchen, they can increase the bottom line for our food services on that campus. So there's an interest there in taking a look at that building, but it's... When we use the word cafeteria, we're also looking at a different purpose for that space instructionally.
And on the backside of that is the press box and bleachers, and so you start touching those facilities, you have a whole nother issue with ADA and...
Press box, sore subject with me, as you know.
Definitely, they're not important.
Right.
At this point, yeah. Unless we redo the whole... Right, correct, correct. Another unique situation.
900 is... What is 900?
900 is the weight room and dance room. And so, a portion of that dance room would be converted into... We need to move the dance program, along with the band program, to finish our classrooms. But that dance classroom would be, it's going to be an MH suite. So two-classroom suite. Sweet sounds nice, but that's what they call it for a...
What's MH?
The students that are more severely mentally handicapped.
Okay. Okay, special.
They have special needs. They need some kitchen area. They do some of the programs they do for transitioning.
So, you know, I support, let's take an overall look at this, but you mentioned a figure, 10 million, right?
Yep. Let me tell you why.
What would that do? What would 10 million do?
It would... First of all, to try to get to the original intentions of improved facilities on this campus, and to address the greater issues about the overall, I guess, the end product for this campus, we think it's underbudgeted. And the process, I think we're trying to prepare the board for the notion that to respond to the needs of the campus, to try to... One of the things that happened was that during that planning process in '09, there were events held that brought in a lot of people from the public to get input. And then, there was actually an event held on a Saturday morning that had all of the campus's projects on display. It happened to be on Grossmont's campus, in the Old Gym. And so, people got a glimpse of the vision. And so, that vision became what they expected. Unfortunately, there wasn't necessarily budget support for all of the visions that were developed for this campus. And yet, those visions remain the belief of the people who have kids going to that school, that they're going to receive something like that. We know that we can probably come up with a plan that will meet some of those expectations, not all of them. And we know that to even get to the ballpark of those expectations, it's going to cost more money than we currently have budgeted.
So we don't know...
The bottom line, yeah.
The bottom line. Okay.
So that's why it's a range, and I think, by going back through the planning and seeing what is the established budget, seeing what might be appropriate in terms of a new plan for this campus, would give us... Then, we'd have to sit down and really crunch the numbers and see what that would look like.
Okay.
Chris, did you have any other comments that I missed? Okay. Go ahead, person.
I think, Katie, when you and I were talking, Chris had some ideas about, and maybe you already said this, on the Old Gym, that that could possibly be the multipurpose facility? Is that what you said? And then, the cafeteria, we would do the food services there and fix that. And you said that where the multipurpose facility is now planned for, inside the PAC footprint, that that would be a building for band, for whatever?
Performing arts classrooms.
For the forming, performing arts curriculum.
Okay. So that would be all in that structure, in that building? And they wouldn't be spread out on the campus? They'd all be inside that?
Correct. So no auditorium space for them, just classroom space?
Okay. So to get to the performing arts or the multipurpose facility being the Old Gym, what would it take to do that? And then, what is the cost? I'm just trying to talk options here. So what does that take to refurbish that inside-outside technical stuff to make that a usable, historic...
Well, we haven't actually planned a project, but comparing it to other costs that we're seeing with other renovation projects, we're definitely north of $3 million to improve that facility sufficiently to provide, you know, some measure of theatrical performance space for them.
Okay. So that's the $3 million, and we needed to add five or 10 to do the PAC. So with doing $3 million there, I'm sorry?
Well, no. If we... The recommendation to go to 10... If I had 11 million, I think I could do everything in the 2009 Master Plan. Everything.
I've never seen that, so I don't know quite what that is.
Okay. So the five to 10 is, you know, is some subset of the full Master Plan development. That would include all of the campus spine, which used to be Old Highway 80, would be completely redone. The 600 would be completely modernized according to the original plan, which turns it into a six-classroom building. The 900 would turn into the special ed classrooms and the weight room, and also the modernized bathrooms for the serving the pool facility. That would include the renovation of the cafeteria and kitchen facility, and what we need to do to the old gymnasium to make it a useful, multipurpose space. So it's... The $10 million figure is really to give us the whole package on the campus.
With that, the NPR being a classroom building?
Yes.
And then, doing all these other things?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yes.
I have a question like that. Well, I'd like it mentioned to the board and to the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent, I appreciate the input you have. A comment that I know I've made and others have been interested in, being we're talking so much about performing arts centers, is the East County Performing Arts Center. It's a facility worth tens of millions of dollars that sits vacant. It is a disastrous waste of public funds to know that that building sits empty. We know that a lot of campuses have anticipated having a performing arts center. The El Cajon City Council and the city manager are dying to work with the Grossmont District to see if we could create a win-win situation where the district, all the district schools could use that performing arts center, as well as the city of El Cajon, for the benefit of East County. I think I've seen a snippet here and a snippet there in a Weber, but we've never really discussed it thoroughly, like we're discussing things here tonight. We're talking about just now, 11 million dollars here, and, you know, millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars all over East County. But I would like to make sure we have thoroughly exhausted... You know, there's two ways we can approach looking at this issue. One, we can say, okay, it needs new air conditioning, new heating. It needs new ADA upgrades. This is small, and that's big. And we can look at it that, and I think that's how the government officials of East County have looked at this point, where they look at it in a very bureaucratic way, and they see problems, and they just walk away. I don't believe that this has been approached in, let's say, a business perspective where we say, let's find a way to take something that is a waste and turn it into a great asset. I've been doing a little bit of homework, finding extremely exciting things out, and I've been kind of waiting for the board to discuss this, but it seems like the board's never discussed this. So is there anything you would like to say about that?
We have provided quite a bit of information, and we can certainly revisit it if the board would like to do so.
Well, I'm talking about this kind of a format.
Yeah. Well, if you wanted... Well, what we have experienced in our examinations, and we have toured the facility, I think, three different, two different times, and I think some staff members have been there a third time. We've received a report that was generated by the city government in El Cajon back a couple of years ago when they were trying to examine the costs of bringing that building back online and making it a viable enterprise for the city of El Cajon, that included some pretty analytical, business-like analysis of the actual cost to get the building up and operating, those numbers of dollars. It also took a... One of the things that caused it to close down was just the expense of operations to keep it up and running, to keep the lights and heating and air conditioning going and all those sorts of things. And they had a business model that they developed that would generate a certain number of dollars of revenue on a regular basis to pay the freight. And they were looking, and I remember, I don't have the specific dollar amounts in my mind, but they were talking about certain types of acts, coming into the theater, selling 1,000 seats for two or three nights at a time at ticket prices in the $50 to $75 range. We never have that kind of capacity, excuse me, in our high school events to do that sort of thing. It's possible that if we were in a partnership with the city of El Cajon, and they were willing to take some risk in terms of the operating expenses for the facility and not just leave it on the district to do so, but that they determined themselves, in their own experience and then in a subsequent study, that they did not believe they could draw that much business to that facility. That was one of the main concerns that they had. In terms of the facility itself, it is now, it's been there a while, and it has aged. So there's a lot of infrastructure needs. There are some mold issues in the lower levels of the building that would need to be addressed. There are heating and air conditioning issues. There are roof issues. The current lighting system is considered to be outdated and no longer industry standard for lighting of productions and shows and things like that, because it would have to go beyond just what a high school production would be. It'd have to be professional-level production. Same thing with the sound system. In our visits to the facility, the concerns that we had in addition to the things I've just addressed were that as a high school facility, it poses some serious supervision issues. There is a... Adjacent to the structure in which the theater itself resides is a wing that I believe is three stories or maybe four, that is full of dressing rooms and changing rooms and storage rooms and things like that, that, if you've ever talked to any of our principals back here, Georgette, I believe she used to take students there when it was operating. Want to comment on... I mean, it was a nightmare, I believe.
It was. That was one of the reasons why we actually left and didn't continue to have our choir performances there because of the supervision, just because of the facilities. Because I think it is three stories. And we would have, like, 20 parents supervising. That still wasn't enough. So it really is not conducive to high school supervision of students. You know, performing groups and professional, absolutely, but not...
Well, see now, I'm glad this is the first time we're all discussing this publicly. And of course, there's so many things I'd like to say, because I had a chance to talk to an individual who's actually running a charter school. It's a performing arts charter school. And on top of that, he runs a performing arts center like the one in East County, only bigger.
I see.
And I will repeat, because there's so much to say, and I couldn't repeat it as eloquently as he can, but he's... This is his career. It's his life. It's his passion. You see, the Performing Arts Center really shouldn't be run by city government. It really shouldn't be run by a school district. I mean, we've been talking all about the arts, right, and music and so forth. That's what we've been... Now, we just talked about, we spent, what, $18 million for Helix to have a performing arts center? $18 million? They're telling me to make everything. It ranges from $2 to $4 million to get everything stated art, all the bells and whistles, ADA compliant, everything modernized. We're $2 to $4 million, whereas we spent $18 million on Helix, and then the next thing you say is, oh, by the way, the other schools have noticed that Helix has it and they don't. So you can see, if we had a major centrally-located performing arts center for all the schools that don't have a performing arts center, I think it's worth pursuing. And, you know, we can address each one of these issues, but if you wouldn't mind, I would like to perhaps ask this gentleman, where this is his career, because he thinks we have unbelievable... If we had the vision of what that could be, what we could do with that facility, I think it's worth pursuing it if the board agrees, to at least evaluate our options.
Well, I'd be... If you could give us contact information for that individual, we'll have a conversation with them. One other thing I know I got from principals, and then I'll let Georgette comment again, and maybe this is what you're going to say, but there was also the issue that it wouldn't be on campus. And whereas our facilities are on our campuses and kids can use them instructionally during the day, now we would have to be transporting students to this facility, other than... It's a performance venue, but it isn't necessarily a good instructional venue within the confines of a school day, because kids are, would have to bus... The closest campus would be El Cajon Valley, Grossmont High School, Valhalla, and others would have to do some serious transportation to get kids to the facility, and that would raise expenses on an ongoing basis. But please, Mr. Kelly, if you'd be willing to give us that information, we can set something up to meet with this individual and then bring that information...
I'm wondering if the...
If the board is interested.
If the board's interested in pursuing this or not.
May I weigh in? It is unfortunate we didn't have this discussion previously with the board, because I know Mr. Kelly's, you know, talking behind the scenes. I've been meeting with people behind the scenes as well, and I met with the committee to keep the performing arts alive. And I think, you know, we remember Ray Lutz came to our last workshop. A couple of things. One of the things I think we talked about was kind of a logistical nightmare in trying to plan all of our schools or what schools were going to go there, when they all have the same winter programs or the same timing of their programs. So which school is going to use the center and have the evening performance? It just seemed like it wasn't... And then, plus what Georgette says. I mean, you have kids that have their instruments, their uniforms... I mean, you have kids that have their instruments, their uniforms, their costume, everything's on campus, and they just walk across campus to perform. So, and, and I thought about all the neat things we could do in there, have our whole art exhibit that we have at Parkway Plaza put inside around the room, you know, just concrete stamp the inside, fix those, those ADA things, fix the roof, and, but it came down to, I, I don't know, it's an off, it's not on our campus. Would it pass DSA even if we got to the point of making it work with our principals, which I don't think they're, they want to do that? And when I met with this, this committee, they were having a hard time thinking about what show, road shows they were going to bring in. It's a five hundred thousand dollar a year annual operating cost. We can't put that on the backs of our, our teachers and our high schoolers, and they couldn't even come up with who they wanted to, to get in there. Now, you may have a different source, but they were, they were all over the place.
Mrs. Schreiber, does that mean you don't want to pursue exploring the possibility or you're open to more information on it?
Well, what I got back when I was exploring is that that's not really what our, our campus, our campuses and our principals want to do.
So you don't even want to-
Well, I thought I pursued it to a point, was DSA, would that, I mean, what are the logistics of that even if we did pursue it? I just have to-
Would that be subject to DSA or, or city code?
Excuse me, I think this is getting away. Here's what I'm asking for. Rather than putting people on the spot to answer questions immediately, which maybe we, they may know or partially know, or maybe not, not at all, but I'm asking the board a simple yes or no question. Would you be interested at least looking at the possibility? And we can examine all these questions that the board members have.
I'm just wondering if it's legally doable first before we start going down that road? Is it legally doable?
Well, that's what we'll find out when we investigate.
I would like to have such a workshop, especially if we're talking about like at Grossmont, that we may not be able to create the performing arts center. Then we need to have a venue where they can do these type of programs. So at least I would like to look at it and see if it is possible, if it's legal, and how much it would cost before we close this door.
I'm always open to more information, but as a teacher, I don't see how this possibly could work. I just, it, I just, unless you can move that facility around.
Yeah, I would.
Pick it up and move it, but I just don't think it's going to work. And what I'm very fearful of is the city of El Cajon couldn't make it work.
Maybe Grossmont, Queen Amaka College.
And if they can't make it work, and I've, I've attended a number of things out there that, where they were almost full. There was a special Grossmont, Queen Amaka arts program that you could buy tickets for. It was great, but-
But they have their own facility.
It was like six or seven performances a year. They, they can't bring in enough quality acts out there, at least they have not been able to, to keep that thing going. And I, I'll look at it, but I, I'm very fearful of us getting the white elephant.
Well, that's three yeses.
I'm always willing to look at more information. However, I don't want to give a directive that requires a huge investment of our staff time and energy to pursue it.
Would you, would you all be interested if I brought someone in to speak to the board about the possibilities of the high school? I mean, just, just like we've listened to all these speakers, and I just have one person maybe address the board for maybe-
Well, yes, with a couple of caveats here. If all it's going to be is somebody that comes in with euphoric vision of how wonderful things are going to be, I'm not sure that's going to get traction. I too have had, had conversations with representatives from the city of El Cajon and others. And where I left that conversation with them was, I'm open to anything. Give me some specifics, give me some data, give me a plan. At this juncture, I am not comfortable giving our staff the directive, come up with a plan and see if it works.
And I'm not asking for that.
Okay. But, but to finish out the history, in my conversations with people from El Cajon-
I'm not talking about people from El Cajon.
No, but this is, this is who we're working with, so it is relevant. The conversation I had with them was, I'm willing to consider it, but it's got to get past the sort of what I'll call the dream or idea concept, and that's all we have right now. We're talking about performing arts centers, they got a performing arts center that they're not using, it looks like a marriage made in heaven. And that's really as far as the conversation has gotten so far. But when I start looking behind the curtain, pun intended, what, what I'm seeing is, they have the, they have done some research, they have what I'll call corporate memory, meaning that there are people still on the staff of the El Cajon city bowels, however they run the city, who, who have worked with this before, and they are, in my opinion, somewhat more qualified and profoundly more motivated to make something happen here.
Sure.
And so in my mind, it's, and this is where I left it nine months ago, and I have heard nothing in the last nine months. But nine months ago where I left it was, give me a comprehensive plan that addresses these issues. And I, I didn't even get into the issues about student supervision and things along that line. I was simply interested in a certain amount of risk associated with annual maintenance and annual costs, because that will come directly out of our general budget. And I'm not comfortable with taking that risk unless somebody can give me, basically what I said was, give me a proposal, and if your proposal is reasonably comprehensive, then I will support handing it over to our staff and let them pick it apart, and we'll come back with some questions.
Right.
But they haven't taken that initiative yet. And so I don't feel responsible to own this issue. We've, we've got a school district to run and a bond to oversee.
Right.
They have, I'm sorry, Jim, it's not a multi, it's not worth multi-millions of dollars. They bought it for a buck, they'll sell it to us for a buck, because right now it's nothing but a, a black hole of cost to the city of El Cajon. They're, they're not going to, they're not going to sell it to us for a bunch of money. It's not worth it. It's, it's frankly an attractive nuisance.
Well, we have probably spent more time discussing this than if we actually had the speaker here who could tell us what the possibilities are, if we're willing to just open our minds to it. So, you know, this-
Will the speaker bring some sort of analysis or numbers, or will he simply come with an idea of how to keep it operating? See, another variable that is not even in the El Cajon analysis is the, the tribes have radically improved their venues for concerts. That's where people go. And, and the kind of concerts that are held at, at the tribes are the kind of concerts that used to come to the El Cajon Performing Arts Centers. You don't get top-tier artists to come in. You get what I'll call second-tier concerts, concerts I go to, people that were big in the eighties and they're still together, right? Concerts that, you're competing with Humphreys, is what you're competing with.
Let me just say this, Mr. President, there's so much more that, I apologize for not talking prior to meeting to updating you with all the information I've gotten. But unfortunately, the, the comments you're making are based on an old conversation we had probably maybe several months ago, and I haven't filled you in with a lot of the information I've received that I think that the board would be very interested in. What I'm asking for is maybe half an hour of the board's patience at a future board meeting, just to listen to, because there's things that we have not heard before from El Cajon or anyone else that you have spoken to up to this point.
I would support that if it's accompanied by a written plan that is comprehensive enough that we could hand it to our staff and say, will this work, why or why not?
Well, let's be realistic. No one's going to write a book, I don't know how thorough or comprehensive a plan you have in mind is, but no one's going to spend thousands of dollars coming up with something before they've even gotten permission from the board to do it. You see?
To request-
I mean, would you, would you spend, you know, hundreds of hours possibly or thousands of dollars to, to come up with something where there's been absolutely no commitment whatsoever to even, even hardly listen to them? What I'm saying is, if you would just trust me, if we could just have a speaker, we could put on the agenda for the next board meeting, who could just make a brief presentation. We listened to many, many, many speakers, and I've been enduring board members speaking and speaking and speaking and speaking and speaking. This is the one time I'm speaking tonight, if I, if you could just-
You mean asking questions?
Or whatever you want to call it. If you could just allow me this one favor, to have one speaker come and speak to the board about something very, very important. We've been talking about performing arts centers all night.
I can support that.
Thank you.
And I think that there has been enough discussed here tonight to simply put you and the city of El Cajon on notice-
It's not the city of El Cajon.
Well, whoever.
Yeah.
To put the interested parties who are trying to accomplish this on notice, that I have a fairly high threshold of skepticism that needs to be addressed.
And if you reject it, the board can reject it. You won't hurt my feelings at all. But I feel like it would be, with what, what I have learned, not that I'm an expert, of course, but what I've learned, I think it's worth at least listening to with an open mind for a half an hour. This person would have to fly in from Sacramento, so, you know, there'd be expenses on his part just to come here to speak to us.
If the board decides to do this and have this gentleman speak to us, it, it needs to be attended, and I don't like to do this, but it needs to be attended by some principals and some performing arts people, because your level of skepticism doesn't even compare to mine. I am so skeptical of this because I actually have attended high school performances, and I still attend them. And I go, I've been out to see the Valhalla play the last couple of years. If there's 200 people there, I'll be surprised. And I've been to the performing arts center, and there's 1,100 seats in that performing arts center, and you put 200 people there, and I just don't, the, the day-to-day cost. So I'm very skeptical, skeptical, but I will listen. But I, if I'm going to listen, I want the teachers to listen, and I want the principals to listen so that I can get some feedback.
Sure. Well, great.
And I'm willing to listen, and I already said that, but we kind of closed the door on this. I talked to the El Cajon people that were involved with this, and all I'm saying is we probably should have had that discussion nine months ago when we kind of closed the door on that. But this is based all on a premise that we set, told our community that we were going to build packs on all of our campuses. We did not. We do not have packs in our bonds, so I don't know why we're going out for a pack that's not even on our campuses and will not accommodate our students on their campuses. So I met with these people, they, they couldn't even put a plan together. So I don't know who this guy is from Sacramento, but our own El Cajon people that support that theater, they know the tribes have built casinos and theaters, they know they can't compete, and there was, it was just logistically not going to happen for us to maintain that on our own. So, but I'll listen.
We have Helix next. So, so just to conclude, and, but I guess we're looking at a general nodding of the heads and consensus on the Grossmont campus would be to proceed, open a 90-day window for some replanning and visioning of that project and keep the board involved and informed of where we're going to go with that. And I'm kind of front-loading the board of the possibility this may have budget implications down the road, up to $10 million, and who knows. Helix, here we have an issue surrounding new versus modernization. The bond called for modernization of the admin building. The current plan is to convert an existing admin to a student support services and build a new admin at the new front entry to the campus. As you heard Chris Rizzuti mention tonight, that they believe that by downsizing or economizing on some of the projects that are part of the overall campus budget, they can generate enough funds to complete that particular project, to complete that reorientation of the campus, a new front door with a new building over there where the performing arts center's going in. So that is my recommendation with regards to that. It does not really require, this particular item will not require board action specifically unless there is an issue here where a member of the board would like us to bring something different regarding Helix for future consideration. Item three is El Cajon Valley, again, two issues here around new versus modernization. As you saw earlier this evening, and it's a, and I would urge you to look carefully at that, and, and we asked our presenters earlier to move along quickly, and they did a fabulous job, and I have the score sheet here to, I timed everybody on my stopwatch, and you all did very well. But if you would look at the El Cajon Valley footprint, please, if you take a minute to do that, and to pull up your map of the campus. And I don't know, if somebody can find that, well, actually, there's also that other map, isn't there, here, in the slideshow? That might even be better, in the PowerPoint. What, what page number is that one that shows the?
Page sixty.
Page sixty in the PowerPoint at the end of your book? Okay, if you could look at that. Thank you. What you see on this rather colorful map, first of all, find the red outlines. The red outlines are existing buildings on the campus, and you can kind of make them out. And then the purplish color, and I apologize if I'm wrong on colors, are some new construction and reorientation of that campus away from where things currently are. The three buildings I really want you to look at are the two buildings specifically. If you've been on the El Cajon Valley campus and you know where the old theater is, we're looking at page sixty in the PowerPoint, six zero, on the end of your book. The old theater and the band music room are the two buildings in red outline over in what is now perceived to be a parking lot area. Those buildings are very old and in very bad shape and really are beyond modernization hopes. The large purple building adjacent to that is the new multipurpose building that also includes a new kitchen cafeteria structure. And you'll notice that where those are located, where that multipurpose building is located is the location of the current parking lot between the theater and the, and the rest of the campus. So we're moving buildings into what is now the parking lot, tearing down the old bandroom and the old theater, and building a new parking area in that location. And then you can also see that we're tearing down old PE buildings and coming up with a larger PE building that combines both boys' and girls' locker facilities into one building. So the recommendation for El Cajon Valley is to demolish 23,000 square feet of structures, kitchen, band, coral, ASB, theater, partial admin building, and replace with a new multipurpose building, a coral band, with coral band classrooms, a new kitchen in it, and the ASB offices. So this multipurpose building, combined with those other functions, including the cafeteria, kitchen, and the, and ASB, would be 29,500 square feet. So we are increasing square footage on the campus, in this case by 6,000 square feet, and we want the board to be aware of that change. But it can be, we believe, and the plans indicate, that this work can be done and stay within the campus budget. Is that correct, Katie?
We would be combining a number of budgets, that these were individual modernization budgets, so we'll, we'll aggregate these, and of course, there'll be additional site work with that, but it's within the overall campus budget. Yes.
Okay, would require no, no up, no swing. But this is, this is a departure from the original bond language, but we think it's a wise departure, and it'll help us accomplish the needs of the campus. The second half of that is to allow for the construction of the new admin facility with the remaining site dollars versus modernization, and we would recommend that as well, because it would be able to be accomplished within the site budget. Should that site budget change, that would be the secondary project that we would come back to you and say, perhaps we will not do that budget if it goes over. So that's a recommendation on that. Dick, do you have a question?
Are we eventually going to vote on these?
It, we will-
Are you looking for-
Yes. What we will do, if, if that recommendation seems appropriate to you, then we will draft a action item to come to you in October with, for you to vote on that. But I just want to try to answer any concerns or questions you might have on the recommendations tonight.
No, but based on how that campus looks from, what is that, Madison?
Madison.
From Madison, this is fantastic.
Yeah. So we will draft some recommendations for the board and come forward to that in October, and also visit with-
I have one question. As I'm looking at this, and I realize we're talking very rough numbers when I'm trying to compare square footage, but we have what I'll call the old administration building, which is basically in the top-left corner, correct?
It's actually all the way across.
Oh, well-
It includes all that red.
It's all the red, all the way-
All the way into the new administration building?
Yes.
Because my question is, and my question may be ill-informed, to, on a cursory viewpoint, why are we tearing down a building and building virtually the same-sized building right next to where it was, instead of modernizing it, if it is an administrative building?
Chris? Go to the podium, please.
Without the benefit of the designers here, the magic is in two stories. So we have, if, I have a map to talk to, I mentioned earlier, there's, along Madison, there's a large wall, which is the back of the admin building. The foyer, the entrance to that building has actually been filled in, is now the MSF's office, that's the receptionist. We're using the hallways as administrative space. It doesn't suit, the building is along Shotgun Shack, if you will, and the errand staff is a long walk down the way. What happened now was, this building would actually, the new building, would be two-story, would actually tie to the MP room. There'd be supervision across the campus. In the new quad, it would be, happen from the older buildings being removed, and so there's a lot of benefit reworking an old WWII, post-WII design into modern concepts, being able to see through the campus from Madison. It would transform just a worn-down facility into something that we'd all be proud of. And I believe we can do that all with an existing budget by, there's a pot of dollars, if you will, for the campus-
Right.
And by combining certain budgets and reducing scope in others, we can make it to the end.
So, I mean, the simplest and most profound part of your answer, if I've got it right, is the current building's one-story, and the new one will be two?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. And dramatic improvement on the entrance and face of the campus, which I think is important in our community. Right, right.
That's true as well.
Which they now do to get to the band room or to the theater. So we will bring action to the board in October on that. At Mount Miguel, there's a CTE issue. Within the bond language, there was some mention of a plastics program. That program is no longer offered. And the space for that was to be, and there was also, excuse me, space on campus to be modernized for Child Development Center and bond-funded. We just want to get your approval on those changes, that departure from the bond language, because the plastics program has been eliminated. And Katie, can you give me any backup on that second piece of that, the space to be modernized?
Yes, the, where it would have been was in the Building 400, so that will be modernized, and it's within, it's within, it's within the bond, not bond language, but within the available campus dollars.
Yeah.
So the space that would have, you know-
Been the plastics?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And does this require action at some point by the board to make that change? Or are we just, is this more information?
Bond language says we're going to do CTE plastics, and we're proposing that we not do that. So I would offer that, yes.
We'll then bring-
I would support that. I think the commitment we've made to the governing board and to the CBOC is to bring forward for specific action, any departures from the bond language.
Very good. So we will do that as well, unless there's objection. El Capitan, as you saw earlier tonight, there's a proposal here for new versus modernization to build a new PE complex. We've already, I believe, made one presentation to the board on that project in the past. That project's also gone to the CBOC, I believe, at least one time, and to the Board Bond Subcommittee for discussion. We would like to bring forward to the board an action item in October approving that change in the plans, as you saw once again outlined this evening. And then regarding CTE on the El Capitan campus, we would like to delete the CTE programs not offered any longer on that campus, plastics, culinary, child development. And the space that would have been dedicated for that would be modernized for classroom use and would be able to be bond-funded. So we would also bring you an action item along those lines. Persol, you have a question?
I know, Dina made a mention of the site costs to do that backside, which will be an overrun. And so I just don't know where that's gonna, how that's gonna end up, because I think we're kind of behind an eight ball. We're good?
No, we're not.
Yeah, good girl.
No, we're not, because we originally, in all of the stuff that you had earlier, showed the library, and it had a fairly substantial budget that went with it, but the library is not in our bond language. So the library falls really to other needs down lower, and so that money is still part of the school's campus budget dollars, so that can go easily to take care of any overages that have for that site development part of it.
That's a huge piece to just kind of change the-
It makes a big difference for this particular campus, absolutely.
Absolutely. So, question, on, how come some libraries were touched in the bond? Was that just prioritized by the campuses, I guess, when we went out or something?
It was when language was written up, and some campuses had it in their language and some didn't. So I can't tell you, I didn't write the bond, so-
And I think that's what, they all each prioritize something, and El Cap's obviously wasn't-
I don't know, it just, for some reason-
So that wasn't in the bond language?
Katie and I spent a lot of time going back and looking at H and U-
Oh, I know you did.
And the library, just, the library word is nowhere in either one.
Couldn't find it to materialize.
We tried real hard. We tried.
Okay, so that was kind of on the docket, but really off the docket?
And it had a budget. It has a budget, so-
Wow.
Yeah, so that money goes, it's still part of the campus, so, since we're, the building's not there. And one of the things we've talked about is what we would still want to do if we're at the end of the project and we're totally done, because their admin and their library, obviously, one whole wing, we would do a light mod if we had money left over, so that those two buildings don't stand out like a sore thumb on that campus. Absolutely.
Thank you. Granite Hills has a funding issue. The modernization of the Building 110 and Food Service Building falls below the line, and we would recommend approving that change to the bond language, because other campus priorities have replaced that particular project. So we would, because anytime we're going to do a change on the bond language, we want to come to the board, we just want you to understand why, when you see that item, that's what's behind it.
What is 110?
Katie?
I'm sorry?
It's the PE building, Food Service PE, ASB, the wrestling room, et cetera. Is one a huge, large building?
And it's a, it's a larger building. Those are, those are subsets of the building that, those are areas within the building we can't get to. And so the budget needs to do the entire structure is beyond our needs, but it's also offset partly by, it looks like an item that I missed, which is a new admin, doing new admin versus mod, which is in the bond language. So that's an item I missed on our list. I apologize.
You don't have it on the list, okay.
I know. I, I missed it.
Say that again.
What are we doing? They want to do, bond language called for mod of admin, and we want to do new, and that's-
Let's look at the map.
Yes.
But, real quick, on the, on the-
Page 17.
On the one room, the, real quick, with the weight room? Georgia?
It's the wrestling.
Oh, wrestling, okay, never mind. Because Georgia, didn't we have a weight room that was dedicated, right, to a coach? That's intact. Okay, so where's the, so the wrestling room? I need to see where that's at.
Page 17 on the PowerPoint.
Page 17 in the PowerPoint.
Oh, on the PowerPoint.
Or you can also look at the map back on the El Cap tab. Either one has it.
On the tab, right.
So the-
Yellow, the two yellow.
Okay.
So 17 in the PowerPoint or the Granite Hills tab?
Okay, so what- This is the new, and it's currently here. And, so in the, if you're looking at your PowerPoint, the 30 building is the existing admin to date. It said modernization of the existing admin with an addition. So it's got a new addition that's called out for it. But when we're looking at it to master plan it, where a new addition to go on and to try and put a two-story, we're talking so much more costly, it's cost-effective to build a new and put all of their student support and their admin in one location. It's just not cost-effective to do this, the language is requiring. So we're coming with a better option, a better spend of our dollars. And it gives us a front door, because right now, for you that go to Granite, there's no front door, there's no parking. We're going to get you a new front door.
You know, and we maybe forgot to mention that, but you can see it on the map, and it's, the new arched way by the green block in the parking lot is sort of a nice, a nice change as well, opening up to that quad area there. Because right now, it's a bit of a stroll to get back to attendance, or counseling, or admin, any of those sorts of things.
Yeah, as you've grown these campuses up, the spine, I guess, is what we're calling it, has kind of changed, or is that, you keep the same?
That is, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so it's, it's how to get to here. So this flows so much better than what we have. Okay, so-
So we'll bring forward an item-
And that's within budget, or you said it has a funding problem?
And the work, the recommendation is within budget? The campus budget.
Right, right, right. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item, Santana. There's a CTE bond language item here. We would recommend that we come forward to delete childcare and cosmetology programs. They are no longer offered on the campus. And the space in the Building 400 that was part of that would be modernized for other classrooms and able to be bond-funded, and it is within the budget, and so we will recommend that language change to you as well. And are we available to answer any questions you have about that change?
The only question I have is an overall question, because I think we've deleted some childcare programs across the district, and are they migrating to the Grossmont childcare facility?
Teresa?
Is that how we, because I thought we said we were bringing more in from other campuses.
The childcare facility at Mount Miguel was intended to be a standalone CTE program. It was not a, it was not part of the CalSafe program.
Okay.
But the one in Grossmont, the Grossmont one does take kids from other places.
Oh, absolutely. Grossmont High Schools is really the district childcare development program.
So these can kind of go away, because they have that to come to.
Exactly, exactly.
And that was, okay, great, thank you.
Valhalla, there's a funding issue. And you heard that earlier tonight. Katie kind of went over, why don't you revisit that quickly, just so we can frame the recommendation?
DSA got hold of us, and they don't like that building. I mean, it's a funky building, to say the least, but it's loved by many. What they're requiring us is to put in place conditions that allow exiting and smoke evacuation at a certain pace. We assess about $4 million. So we have, we have about $25 million left for construction. We want to modernize the main building, not partially, and that includes some of the additional exactions. We don't think we're going to get to a number of facilities, unfortunately. I've listed them in the book there, and one of them is a multipurpose. That campus has 30%, 40% of its population, Mary Beth can speak to it better than I, but 30% or 40% of their population participates in the performing arts. And so when a multipurpose, in this case, falls below the line, and they need a black box, so the thought would be, we would convert that theater down below into a black box. And now when they need a performance space, we don't have the, we have about $4 million we assess left. We suspect we're about $4 million short. So there's a number of facilities that are going to fall below the line here. So our, I mean, if we magically get sprinkled with extra millions of dollars, or we, our risk mitigation dollars are not all used, we don't have a high inflationary market, any number of things, we get more state money than we expect, this would be a candidate for your consideration in the future for additional dollars. In the meantime, let's move out here. We've been messing with this DSA issue literally for a couple of years now. We'd like to move out and get this thing planned, and then, and then see where we are at the end of some time period.
What's a mini gym?
Not a large gym.
A little tiny gym.
It's not a big gym.
What does that mean?
Mary Beth, come, Mary Beth, come on down.
Come on down, Mary Beth.
The mini gym is the original gym facility, 37 years old at Valhalla. That's about the size of a basketball court with no space on the end. What, it's where our current, currently, it's being used for our dance program, our color guard program, and our wrestling program. So they rotate through there and use that. So it's-
Are you going to rename that?
And then, I think it was about 20 years ago, that the gym was constructed, that that's what we consider the main gym.
Right. So many takes care of auxiliary things.
Yeah, so basketball games, volleyball games, PE classes.
And we touched that, because it's green, so we did-
Some modernization to it?
It got some bleachers-
Cool, okay.
About six years ago.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then we did some bathrooms or something in the main gym. Is that what that green is?
No, but if we could, that'd be great.
So what does this green mean, that's on the main gym?
Let me find my- Sorry, I was looking at the previous schools map. Oh, I was looking at the wrong one. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, this right here. Oh, that's our band room. Sorry, thank you. I apologize. So on that main, the large gym-
Right.
That green space is where our current instrumental music program-
Oh.
Is held.
Okay.
My apologies.
Okay, thank you.
I was thinking, the restrooms are on the other end, closer to the stadium.
Okay.
So.
Well, you're good. Yeah, do you have the press?
We have a C-tainer on top of our bleachers.
So we will, we'll bring a recommendation to you, moving the NPR below the line, but then would also recommend that the board note the possible future consideration of a $4 million plus-up, should funding be available later in the program.
It's a bummer, DSA-
Yeah.
Took some of that money away.
Oh, every time they look at that, they find something they want to change.
It's what we live with.
Now, another campus where we have much to discuss is the Chaparral campus. And you asked a question earlier about where would that, remember, the non-bond program tonight we talked about with ECal?
Right, right, okay.
Actually, would be located in a number of portables. I'm not sure if I remember the number, but it would set up a little mini-campus on the, on the grassy front area of the campus, beyond the student parking lot. If you think about, there's a rather large corner to the property there, and it's just right now, grass and a little rolling hill and several trees along the boundary. We'd be able to place it into that space, that ECal piece for the campus. That's, that's where we, if, and we'll bring you something in October to look at it more specifically, but that's the general vicinity. Regarding the Chaparral bond program, and we've had some discussion about this, but I think this is a, the campus enrollment and the programming level discussions are needed to determine the resulting master plan. And so I'm going to recommend that we proceed with the construction of the two CTE buildings, and those were called out for in the bond, and that, I would recommend that the balance of the program fall below the line, and that would be the complete modernization of the existing classroom buildings, and consider future additional funding, should state funding be available, to address the modernization of those existing classrooms. This is, this is a departure from what you expressed in May. You wanted to make sure that every classroom got touched. And at the same time, there's bond language really calling for these two CTE buildings. And I think that the campus and the program at the campus greatly value what the CTE classrooms would bring to the campus in terms of building the potential for job skill development for this population of students. The campus also, I think, and Katie, I don't know where you are, in terms of, would there be any capacity for a light modernization of those classrooms in the existing budget?
Maybe. We need to go bid it. We've got, those two buildings are out of design, and they have been for some time, but there's a infrastructure piece to it. It also gets us about $3 million of state money.
Okay.
We, once we do that, it could, there's $8 million left. It could expend all of that, or it could expend a portion of it. Our estimates say it's probably going to chew up most of it. So we've looked at a couple of different options about maybe doing a light mod, but until we know what we got, and go hard-bid it, then we don't really know. But the likelihood is probably not enough. We probably need a couple million bucks.
So at some point in the future, if the board wants to support that recommendation when it comes to you, you could call for, again, possible plus-ups down the road for other issues on the campus. But this is really a programmatic decision in addition to the bond decision. We're trying to look at what are the experiences being provided to the students in our continuation school. And I think that if you look at the mission of continuation schools, trying to find opportunities for students who've not been successful in a traditional school environment, who have fallen behind in credits, who are interested in completing a high school diploma and then having a job, a set of skills and knowledge base that would help them be ready for the job market after they get their high school diploma. It seems like a very important space to support the development of CTE facilities. And I know that- And I know that the people who work there and who are supporting that feel strongly about it as well. But it is a departure from, uh, the CT building's not a departure from the language, but not being able to modernize the classrooms is departure from a board, previously identified board priority. So I need to get some feedback from the board on that, on that issue.
And on this plan, uh, you have CTE building one and two. Those are the two buildings that we're talking about?
Right.
And again, what, what's going in those two buildings?
Two science lab, culinary, floral.
Construction.
Construction. Couple more.
Uh, horticulture, floral, flower.
Cosmetology, horticulture. And I don't know if the horticulture's right. Floral, thank you. Floral.
And that, and that's what the campus has decided that's what they want, those?
Well, they try to offer some version of many of those programs now. But if you remember in the discussion, I think we had at the Board Bond Subcommittee, some of those are happening in what used to be a science lab or they're, or they're, or they're in a portable where they've got a freezer outside for the flowers and some things like that. So they're trying to create an environment that would really provide a full experience for the students in those CTE areas. I'd like the board to consider that. That is a recommendation we'll be coming back to you with. And if, if you have needs for other information, be prior to that time. You'll see it coming up on a board agenda, and we'll try to provide you with additional information as necessary.
Things below the line, for example, uh, the other buildings?
We put everything below the line pending your direction.
Right, okay. So, um, and those are in the, on, on the budget side under below the line?
Below the line indicates projects that are in the bond language that we might not be able to get to.
Right, but those budgets are in your financial statement.
Yes, yes.
That says, but are, how are they denoted below the line?
Uh, not, they wouldn't be in the budget. They are on the, like, on page 57. We list all the possible things we might not get to. So if you elect that we should proceed with the two CTE buildings, then they won't be listed as below the line. Just the modernize, modernization piece. So the available budget for that campus is 12.9. We've spent 4.3. We've got 8 million worth of work, and we're suggesting the two CTE go first. Therefore, the balance will fall below the line.
Right. And, and it makes sense not to have a budget to those now because then you have to go out and do budgets on all of the things below the line. But I think we have an idea because we have an overall $1.5 billion where we've modern, we've, we, instead of modernizing, we built new because it was more feasible to do that. Um, things kind of fell in more in this kind of program, drove it this way. So, um, I guess, are we still in line with the 1.5 baseball? Because we've moved things around. We've added some, some scopes and ideas and, and plans. So I guess I, I just don't know, are we, is it still the 1.5 overall? And it can't be because we're asking for five or 10 over here, and we're asking for four over here, and da-da-da-da-da. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
So we've moved things around, so I don't know, it's, it's like a moving target.
I think we'd have to update that assessment. Um, I, I don't, I don't think I could give you that off the top of my head right now.
And I think that's one thing that, um, I would like to encourage that the board take a look at. And Katie and I talked about that. Um, I don't, you know, as far as a, a master facility, long-range ma, we have to do that, what, every five years, Bob?
Or facilities plans.
Facilities plan?
Separate from bond programs.
Yeah, it is. But don't we have to do that every five years or something? And then, you know, then you have, what we're doing obviously with the, with the bond and all of that, kind of putting it all together, see, once you do, once you get recommendations from the board, fit that piece into the long-range master facility plan in a sense, so we have an idea of what, what we are actually moving towards. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item is the new high school project. Uh, both issues are funding issues. The current projected cost is $80 million and $2,012 with $65 million in the budget for the school. Uh, want to recommend that we retain the $65 million budget, that we complete and execute the Army Corps of Engineer and LAFCO permits, that we place the project on hold until enrollment thresholds, per pupil funding levels are met, and the availability of state facility funding is, is known. I think also the strengthening of that recommendation is the uncertainty in the current environment in addition to the identified issues around per pupil funding and enrollment declines, uh, is also the effort currently underway in the community to proceed with a unification effort. So that recommendation would be to finish that permitting process and then put the project on hold until those other items come back to where we need them to be.
So put it on hold after we pull the Army Corps of Engineering permit and LAFCO? We've already put it on hold past any of that anyway. Um, so...
We think that could happen tomorrow. We could get the permits as soon as tomorrow. That's what Deena did.
No, I know, but we put the rest of the project on hold. No, I, I get that.
Okay.
So, um, first of all, what's the, what, what do we mean by variance? Just so I...
Variance?
We, we've moved up to that. And then number, um, two is I think it would be important that in that long range or, or we, or we put some notes to something is, you know, we, we don't know what's going to happen up in Alpine in their, in their efforts outside of, outside of what we're doing. Could take them just as long by the time we move forward with this to build a school or whatever. You know, so I don't know all that. But also, we have 1,028 students less. Um, so decline enrollment, decline budgets is not just something that we look at and throw it up the hill and say, that's how we do our measurement. I, I think it's important to look also as we're building all these things out.
The capacity on our campuses.
The capacity on the campuses.
Yeah.
And I didn't think the functional capacity at Granite was 26. I thought it was lower than that. But we're building it out to 26. Am I wrong?
I, I think the functional capacity desired for Granite is lower than 26. I'm not sure where you're getting that. We're building it to 26 with the, at the end of the, at the end of the bond program.
Well, I need that qualified.
Okay, we can get that qualified. I don't think that's...
I thought I heard that somewhere that it was going out to 26.
Deana?
Yes.
Current enrollment?
Okay, so what are you doing with the rest of the kids when we...
They're still in, they're still in hold.
And we still have a lot of portables there.
Okay, so we are going to hold them in portables until we finish the bond.
And the, and the population will decrease on the campus every year during the four-year roll and other boundary changes. We saw, there's been a reduction there this year. Then portables go away.
Okay. So I think with the possibility of Alpine maybe doing their own thing, but that's not concrete.
No, it's not.
So you still have to look at this, this avenue, this avenue, and then we are losing 1,028 kids and consider how that affects all of our building as well.
Absolutely.
Because aren't we declining?
We are.
Whether the building is going out, we're declining.
Exactly. Well, but ultimately, we're, it, in most cases, we're not adding square footage. In some cases, we are.
Did, yes.
In some cases, we are. But in some, in many cases, we are not.
Well, we, we stopped the major square footage. Let's put it that way.
There you go. But I, uh, and, and the enrollment picture is not going to brighten overnight. Uh, right now, we have a real issue. If you look at our current enrollment data, we have 500 fewer freshmen than we have seniors. That's highly unusual. And, uh, and that means that next year, we'll see another decline. We know that the Alpine Elementary District is 150 kids smaller this year than they were a year ago.
I think it's, it might even be more than that.
And we know that the same is true in La Mesa Spring Valley.
Yeah.
Cajon Valley is up about 100, but overall, the picture is still not, you know, we, we, it's going to take us a while to level out and then start to come back. And we, you know, so we just have to be conscious of that in our decision-making.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking is that we're real conscious about all of these other, these factors as we're building things out.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, thank you.
And then the last item there was needed determination of level grading to implement current board direction. We would recommend that the grading decision, um, be made one to two years prior to enrollment and per pupil funding thresholds met. In other words, what we need to watch is for trends where we're moving back in the direction where we would re, uh, bring, revitalize this program and revitalize this project, and then, and then take action to do the grading at that time. So what we're basically recommending at this time falls into the first recommendation where we put the project on hold, except for accepting the ACU and LAFCO permits.
And then I think, Kate, was there a, a cost involved with putting this on hold? Because didn't you have to go in and do something for LAFCO and Army Corps? Do we need to fence it? We don't need to do anything other than just leave it open?
If we let that property, if we get the permit, let it go dormant for some period of time, we will have to put in some mitigation measures with regards to stormwater prevention and security.
Fire and fire? Don't you have to keep that fire hazard?
Yeah, you gotta knock down the vegetation.
So that was what I think we said, what, 10 to 20 thou, how much a year to maintain that?
The ongoing expense of that?
Well, yeah.
We thought we would have to spend, uh, for our last board workshop, about $100,000 to secure it and the SWPs and all that. And then we'd spend about 30 a year to maintain it.
Okay. Thank you.
Last item on the last page, page 98 in your book. I'd like to bring forward to you a superintendent planning guidance document at a future meeting. And this document is, you know, it says superintendent's planning guidance is really based on board, identified priorities and recommendations from the previous workshop and reflects some of the conversation we've had here this evening. And so you've seen this in a different format previously following the last bond workshop, but I, we're, we're putting it into this format. Take a moment, look at it, that unless otherwise directed by the governing board, multipurpose performance space will be a maximum of 12,000 square feet with an additional 4,000 square feet for band coral, um, coral, black box, et cetera. Any spaces vacated through a move to a new multipurpose space must either be demolished if being replaced and no optional use is identified, or modernized if a classroom use is planned and with, and within the current campus budget. I'm going to point out the first phrase in that paragraph, unless otherwise directed by the governing board. But I think that, um, the, the expectation will be the remainder of the paragraph. But we want to give the board the ability, if they want to give other direction on a particular campus, to be able to do so. With regards to project prioritization, projects will be prioritized per board direction provided at the bond review workshop. We should probably make that plural. Classrooms and other high-use student facilities will receive highest consideration. Cafeterias, gymnasiums, site work, and administrative building projects will be included only when all other, all, excuse me, all higher priority projects are accomplished or if in the bond language. CTE funding. State CTE funding was received to partially fund projects on three campuses, all of which are now complete. For remaining CTE projects, we should assume that we will not receive any supplemental state funding and should size the project accordingly. The remaining CTE projects will be reviewed as part of the larger bond review process and will be included in recommendations to the board as appropriate. No square footage increase. With the exceptions of new multipurpose facilities, square footage on each campus should stay essentially unchanged. Additional square footage resulting from new construction should generally be offset through the removal of old buildings. Yes?
Okay, and our original plan wasn't, weren't the, um, multipurpose facilities in there with the 16,000, 12 and, and 4,000 square feet? So what does that mean, no square footage increase?
We're comparing to the existing square footage on the campus. Not to the plan in the bond program, but to the square footage that existed on the campus. So excluding the addition of the multipurpose facilities, trying to stay par on the square footage. No additional square footage, Al. Anything else?
Because that's part of it.
Right, right. Remove interim housing. 100% removal of interim housing by 2012 unless specifically approved. And you saw tonight our progress report on that and the plan for removal of the rest. Sites will not be allowed to acquire new relocatables without specific approval through the bond review process, and that would include board approval. Bond language. All departures from the bond language and adopted master plans require approval through the bond review process. And that we would stay within the campus budget. At this time, school site project planning should continue to be managed within current budgets and governing board priorities. Should funding shortfalls materialize during the course of the program, program scope reductions may be necessary toward the end of the program. And remember again that because of the slowdown in the issuance of state funding and bond programs, the life of this bond program now is pushed out to 2022, something, 21?
21.
And that, again, all that remains to be seen how that's going to play out. So we may find ourselves down the road. And it, it isn't stated anywhere here, I don't think, let me just check real quick. No. This process is going to be ongoing. And when things come up in the bond program that require any other kinds of departures or changes from the things that we're going to ask you to act on here in the next couple of months, we will come to the board specifically to address those issues with you.
The question, um, if you're making these recommendations for us to do some, take some kind of action.
Right.
But not on all, because you want to do a 90-day community event.
We're going to bring something, yeah, some of them will be in October and others will be down the road.
Okay, so what, what is the process for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee? How soon will they get this in order to make, you know, really look at it and make recommendations to the board?
That is our process to review these, vet them with the CBOC in addition to the Board Bond Subcommittee before it comes to the, before the full board. That makes October a little bit difficult, and so we've got to go back and see which ones we have already taken through the CBOC process.
And then the future plans and direction of staff, we will update all campus budgets and phasing plan for the remainder of the program and resolve any overruns. We'll proceed with planning projects and return to the board and report on projects that exceed the budget by over 10% or fall below the line. CTE projects going forward will require superintendent validation as to being part of a pathway. And that the report on the Grossmont High School planning efforts will come to you. And I'm going to say within 90 days, I'm, I'll tell you right now, I hope to have it for you at the January meeting. Rounding up the calendar, just a few there past 90. And so I'm, I would also, you can look for that document. That last page will come to you for board approval as well, just so we have it on the record as part of the new long-range master plan. Any questions from the board or any additional questions or comments from our CBOC members?
I just want to make a quick comment. This is a lot of work. And I know there was a lot of dedicated people involved and even had to take my questions on a regular basis and get me answers. And I really appreciate the work, the effort. And, um, I hope we have ongoing conversations about this. I think this has started that, that process, that nothing gets biased. We see what's going on, um, so we can readily advise our community of what we're doing on our bond project. And the new website will be great. That'll help facilitate as we move forward and make sure everyone knows what's going on. So thank you for all the work in this.
I'm going to, thank you very much for allowing me additional time here. Um, and I'm going to ditto what you said, Priscilla, and especially since I've seen the same group of people go through the same presentation basically twice. Um, I really appreciate all of your efforts. I mean, it's, it's amazing. And having come from La Mesa where we did bond oversight and that whole thing, I mean, you guys have a tremendous program here. It is, it is really premier, and you should be proud of it. Um, and I appreciate Scott's, um, comments also in terms of including the bond oversight committee in the recommendations because we did, um, go through, and a lot of these were discussion items, and they weren't put, presented to us in the, in the form of, this is what the superintendent is going to recommend to the board. Um, and there were a couple of things that were a little bit different. And so I appreciate your saying, you know, well, we want to make sure that we put it, put it before the oversight committee before it gets voted on by the board. Because as I was sitting there thinking, well, let's see, our next meeting is the end of October. So, yeah, that's...
Some of these may end up landing in November instead of October.
Yeah, so...
Try to bring what we can as quickly as we can.
So I, I really appreciate that. And then, um, the only other thing is, at our meeting last night, we discussed including the, the timing or the specifics of bringing, um, issues before the CBOC in the superintendent's planning, you know, presentation, that last page on your, on your sheet. And, and Scott said that he would, you know, figure out a way to include that. So, um, it all looks good. And, and once again, I mean, I have to commend you guys, like everybody included in, in the district and the, and the business office and, and Katie and her staff, uh, just, just tremendous amount of work that's being done. And I, I really appreciate the transparency and the willingness to, um, because like, Priscilla, you think you, you should see us at the Bond Oversight Committee and the Audit and Finance Subcommittee. I mean, these guys endure a lot of questions, always a smiling face, willing to answer whatever question. And if they don't have it, they bring it back to us. So, thank you very much.
Well, you know me.
Oh, I do, I...
That's why we're supposed to drag around the job.
I'd like to thank everybody for what went into this. This is a very good presentation. I would like to request, um, what in effect is a couple more columns to this, which is the superintendent's recommendations. There's a term that is kind of flying around here, below, all below the line, that makes me a little nervous. I think it makes everybody a little nervous. And so what I would like to kind of bring everything forward from all the supporting documents here in this book is... all the supporting documents here in this book, is all of those below the line items, such as, you know, if they're El Cajon Valley, I'd like to have them all listed here. I assume this is, what, an Excel file?
It's doable.
Perfect. I'd like those listed here. And then, I'm going to ask for something that I know that, that Katie and you were uncomfortable with. And so, I'm going to make it real soft. I'd like a range of your gut-level response of how much that below the line item would cost. And I'm pretty tolerant of a range, you know, plus or minus, is plus or minus fifteen percent reasonable for a range in twenty twelve dollars for, for these things?
The number guy behind you is nodding his head, Katie.
And, and one more column. So, I want, basically, I want three columns. One column is just a list of these below the line items. The next column is a range of costs to address those below line items. And the third one, which to me is going to bring everything together for my analysis, is I want to know how many students a day are directly affected or potentially directly affected by that line item. For example, if a specific classroom is not going to get modernized, I'm assuming if it's a, I don't, I don't know the schedules, but if you have a seven-period day, there's one prep, that's six periods of students. And the average class size, you know, six times whatever the average class size, that is how many students a day are going to be affected by that. And if they're, I'll, I'll allow for some asterisks, if there are students with special needs, or there are some other reason to, to kind of highlight certain students. The number's low, but it's significant because kind of thing. So, if I could have those three columns, for me at least, that's going to serve as a roadmap for analysis for all this fall below the line stuff that keeps kicking out there.
That's good. Those are great ideas.
Any other comments by board members?
Are we about ready to adjourn?
I am. I, I can't speak for anybody.
Okay, well, I, I just want to, Steve Coover, did he leave? Yeah, some of you may not know this, but Steve Coover was the one who trained the referees in the Green Bay-Seattle game on Monday night. And you might mention that to him when you see him, that I pointed that out.
That's nice. Any other?
Meeting adjourned.